I call this meeting to order. The mayor is going to be running a little bit late. I want to just informally welcome the new guy who's going to be running this meeting today. We're going to do more of a formal welcome this evening. But, so, Mr. Dehaney, welcome. And tell us what you've got today.
To the vice mayor and members of council, it's the beginning of a new era. Looking forward to working with you for the next several years, decades, however long. You know, I'm blessed to be here working with you all. So today, we've got a pretty robust agenda. First item we're going to give is a public safety update as it relates to COVID-19. Dr. Lindsay, the director of the Virginia Beach Public Health Department, also Director Sutton from OEM, and also Deputy City Manager Steve Kovar will give you an update briefly.
Dr. Lindsay is going to be participating virtually. Dr. Lindsay, if you'd like to begin your comments.
Do you have the slides today?
Yes, ma'am, you may proceed.
Good afternoon, members of City Council, new city manager, and also Mr. Mayor, when you arrives. I did want to come back to you with an update from last week. Some of the slides that I'm presenting will be reminders of some of what we talked about last week, but just to give you a progress report of where we are. I'm not seeing slides. Are you all seeing them?
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
Okay, I will try to describe the slides and move through them. I currently cannot see them on the screen, but I will go ahead and describe them as, and hopefully you can advance as I'm describing them. So, on the first slide, I gave you, I'm showing you a map of the state of Virginia, showing a relative rate of community transmission by region. And in that map, you will note that most of the region now is experiencing minimal community transmission. Last week, when I showed you this map, central region was experiencing some moderate transmission, but they have improved. And now, eastern region is the only region that is standing out with significant, and in this case, substantial community transmission for COVID-19. Our disease burden is moderate, and we are trending upwards in terms of increasing disease. Next slide, please. All right, so, this is a slide that depicts the eastern region in terms of disease activity. And the bar graphs there show the number of testing encounters. We had been actively engaged recently in increasing the amount of testing that is offered in the community. This not only includes hospitals and health departments, but also private labs have come on board to provide testing. And also, as you see along that yellow line, that is a depiction of our percent positivity. And you'll notice that our percent positivity is increasing. For the eastern region and for Virginia, our positivity rate is 11.8% compared with 7.8% for the state. The state has also experienced some increase in this and other indices, and that is largely driven by the eastern region. Next slide, please. I wanted to show you this graph just to kind of give you a visual of the trend that we are seeing in disease transmission through the pandemic. And in looking at this graph, and this is also for our region, you'll note that early on, we had very high rates, and those began to come down with some restrictions that were placed on the state to decrease the amount of social interaction and transmission across the state. And it was very successful. We'll see that the numbers came down dramatically. The bars that you see vertically are the dates or approximate times of introduction of the phases of reopening by the governor. So, at the first phase, we did see and expect some increase, but there was a sense that it was beginning to level off until we started to approach Phase Two. Then, with each of these phases, it appears that even with the notification that we're beginning to open up, we see a little bit of early rise in disease activity. But unfortunately, towards the end of Phase Two and beginning of Phase Three, we're seeing very dramatic rises in disease activity. That decline that you're seeing at the very end of this graph actually is an artifact, and that area in the gray zone really represents an area which our numbers and reports are still being tabulated. Next slide. This is also a depiction of our current activity in disease. And what you're seeing here is a comparison of active versus inactive cases. And across the very top, the red dots represent the death rates that we're seeing. And this is a cumulative slide. In the past, when I've shown you this graph, we were able to very comfortably say that most of our cases were inactive. In other words, they had gone through the disease process and had been cleared as being no longer active cases. Now, with the dramatic increase that we've seen recently, our number of active cases have outpaced inactive cases. In fact, for the month of July, the number of cases that we've experienced actually exceeds the total number of cases prior to that time for the entire pandemic period. Next slide, please. And this is a breakdown that I shared with you earlier, has not changed since last week, in the breakdown based on age. And we have seen over time a shift to a younger age group in terms of the demographics. Our current cases as of July 20th are at 2,716 cases, and the mean age is 40 years of age. More than two-thirds of our cases, 72%, are between 20 and 60 years of age. There's a dramatic increase in the 40 and under age group, and a significant peak, as you can see, in the 20 to 29-year-old age group. That remains at this time. It's my expectation that over time, as the disease transmission progresses through the community population, we may start to see that not quite as obvious, but it's clear at this point that the driver of our community transmission is largely in the young population. And we know, based on our case investigations, that a lot of what we're seeing now is associated with social interactions, particularly within families. We're seeing beyond household members, large numbers of celebrations among our positive cases, reporting, as I mentioned before, birthdays, Father's Day events, other celebrations such as graduations, and even backyard barbecues. In addition to that, particularly for the young population, we are observing large numbers of crowded situations, or large numbers of people in crowded situations around bars and our bar areas and restaurants, and among our restaurants that have more of a club-like atmosphere. Again, those gatherings and all of these situations, and a significant portion, social distancing is not being observed, and individuals are not wearing masks. So there's been a significant relaxation as we've moved through lowering the restrictions and reopening society for people not to observe the public health preventive practices that are so critical that must be continued in order for us to keep our numbers down and avoid significant community transmission. Next slide, please. And this is, again, a depiction of age distribution in the red bars compared to representation in the population for the city. And as you can see, the younger age groups, particularly 20 to 29-year-olds and even 30 to 39-year-olds, have significantly higher positivity rates compared to their representation in population. Next slide, please. So another way of looking at this, I wanted to show you what has happened in this age distribution over time. And here, we see a number of colored graphs based on different age groups. The one significant thing is, as you can see, rates of cases have gone up in all age groups. However, the dramatic increase that you're seeing with the yellow line represents the 20 to 29-year-old age group. And also, to the right of that are age-stratified cases in the hospital that have been hospitalized over time. Again, an increasing rise in all age groups. Even though our young population, 20 to 29-year-old, does not represent the largest proportion of hospitalized cases, we're also seeing increased hospitalizations in that age group. Next slide. This next slide is a breakdown of cases by race. And the two largest groups are for the white population that's represented in the blue, the larger blue graph, and also the beige graph representing the African-American population. And to the right of that is that distribution compared to the representation in the population. And based, the first bar represents the number of cases or proportion of cases, and then the second bar represents the population distribution for that group. And as you can see, African-Americans represent about the proportion of cases on par with their representation in the population, which is a bit unique compared to what we're seeing in the state where there really have been dramatic over-representation and disparities in cases in the African-American population. However, for the proportion of cases among whites, we see they are significantly less, there are significantly less cases in the white population compared to their representation in the city. And the remainder is represented by significantly higher rates in Hispanic population, even though there's a small representation of the overall population. And we do have a large number of unknowns, which unfortunately, we are not able to speak to. These are the knowns at this point. Next slide. I wanted to give you another graph that gives you some idea of the outcomes or adverse events related to our increase, and also a reflection of demand. And the most immediate one that we can look at that gives us the closest or closest information in terms of time is emergency room visits. The blue bar there represents the number of emergency room visits in the state of Virginia. And as you can see, there is somewhat of an increase that's being seen here, most recently, but significantly less than with Virginia, which is represented by the darker bar. As you can see here, there's a very dramatic rise in the number of emergency room visits. This is creating a significant demand on our hospital systems, and is a reflection of what we're seeing overall in terms of hospital or people seeking care. One other issue about the emergency room is that it may be a more selective population. A lot of these individuals are individuals who are driven to present because of perhaps having symptoms, or potentially because they have some known exposure, and they are seeking very urgent care. That said, one of our largest local hospitals is reporting at this point a 30% positivity rate in emergency department visits. Next slide, please. Here is just a reflection of the data over time, again, showing the increased number of actually hospitalized cases over time. So now, we've gone from the emergency room to cases that were actually hospitalized. This is a lagging indicator. We would expect to see a delay in increase in hospitalizations. It's not as dramatic as one might expect considering the rise in cases that we are seeing. However, our cases are largely represented by a younger population, which I think explains the reason we don't see a more dramatic rise in hospitalizations. However, again, as we move progressively through stages of transmission of disease, I would expect that we may see more and more transmission from the younger population into other groups. Particularly, I'm concerned about that progression impacting elderly individuals and individuals who may have complications. We are seeing in our case investigations many instances in which large numbers of family, because of the family gatherings, are testing positive, and that not only includes the younger age group, but also adults, the parents, younger children, even toddlers and infants. And so, it's not unreasonable to expect that over time, as this shifts and impacts others who are more vulnerable in the population, we may see a hospitalization and even deaths begin to rise. Next slide. This is just a breakdown of currently age and race distribution and other demographics related to hospitalizations. And as you can see, as age increases, the distribution of hospitalization cases also, their representation increases among hospitalized cases. Also, a significantly larger representation among males. And also, in addition to that, the race distribution is largely for Virginia Beach among the white population for hospitalized cases. Again, deaths also tend to significantly increase. We've seen after about age 60 with each decade of age, the risk of death increases. Next slide. So what is Virginia doing? And I've shared this with you last week. We are increasing our emphasis on enforcement of the governor's executive orders. We have focused a lot on education, particularly with our businesses, particularly the food service industry, but feel that with the significant rise in cases and risk to the population, enforcement is in order at this time, or greater emphasis on enforcement. And I will follow up with more information on that. But in addition to that, we do recognize that in our observation and visits to restaurants, that there is a significant need for continued education of the workers in these facilities. In particular, for many of the restaurants, they may have very young workers who may not be comfortable or quite experienced with how to address noncompliance among their patrons as they enter the restaurant. So, in our visits by our environmental health staff, we are still focusing on educating them on the importance of compliance with the governor's executive orders, and also talking about how to address it with patrons as they arrive. We're also enhancing our public health response efforts with close monitoring of key indicators. In addition to that, still continue to focus on case investigations and contact tracing. We have experienced, as a result of the demand and increased testing, that we are seeing an increased number of, increasing time for turnover in laboratory test results. Unfortunately, we're seeing more and more cases that may be passed, even a seven-day mark, some past a 14-day mark, which does place challenges for our case contact investigation in terms of time, but also our ability to be able to effectively utilize these tools to impact our community transmission rates. We are also adding staff to support our efforts. We are seeing enhanced testing, but again, concerned about the stress upon our labs as a result of the increased demand that is being stimulated by the rise in cases in our communities. We are planning for immunizations. I would continue to feel that as we move into the fall season and into flu season, it will be critical that as much as possible, as many people as possible are immunized to avoid us having to fight both of these battles in terms of outbreaks in the community. We are supporting planning efforts of other agencies, working very closely with other businesses in terms of their planning for preventive efforts in their facilities, as well as schools, K-12, and higher ed. And we have strike teams that are actively addressing outbreaks and providing technical support for prevention in these higher settings. And we do have significant numbers of outbreaks in Virginia Beach area. Moving on to the next slide, please. And this is just a brief summary of our reports that we're receiving on violations. I thought this might be of interest to you. We might mention that we, as you can see in the first graph, it's broken down by type of establishment for which we're receiving violations, and food service facilities top the charts here, restaurants, and grocery, and convenience stores, as well as next in order of brick-and-mortar retail. We are, the types of violations that we're seeing are largely failure to wear face coverings, or not following social distancing, and overcapacity in crowding, for a total of 1,659 complaints. And again, we are working to educate, but also enforce these requirements. Next slide. So, we have partnered with ABC to conduct unscheduled field visits. We worked on this, or went out over the weekends with ABC to conduct these visits. The collaboration has been very positive, very strongly positive. We continue to have support also of law enforcement, and are very appreciative of their support. We have focused on areas with the most complaints, largely Oceanfront and Shore Drive. And most of our time, again, is spent on education, and we have found most businesses to be very receptive, and have made onsite modifications as we have pointed out issues of concern. However, over the weekend, we did suspend two restaurant food permits due to violations of the governor's executive orders, 65 and 67. In, next slide, please. In summary, Virginia Beach and eastern region are experiencing a dramatic and disturbing increase in COVID-19 cases. We are now at substantial, substantial level, community-wide transmission of COVID-19. We are seeing a moderate level of disease burden, and our pace or trend in disease transmission continues to rapidly increase. Our curve is almost at vertical level, which is quite disturbing at this point. There's been a significant shift to younger population in our cases, with the greatest proportion in 20 to 29-year-olds. And public health investigations and observations show major contributing factors, increased socialization, particularly extended family and close friends, and large gatherings. We want to emphasize that familiarity and comfort with individuals does not mean that we can relax these measures. Anyone outside of the household should be considered a stranger in terms of our immune systems, and we need to take those measures to protect ourselves and others. We are also seeing large gatherings in bar areas around restaurants, all of this without observance of public health measures such as social distancing and wearing facial coverings. And of course, other measures are important as well, such as hand hygiene. And even though we would prefer not to see people out at these types of gatherings, critical that if you are ill or experiencing symptoms, you should not be in public in general. Next slide, please. So again, as a reminder, it is important that we all are part of the solution, which each and every one of us does personally and collectively as a community, is critical at this stage. Case investigation and contact tracing will not be able to reverse the trends of the results that we're seeing on human behavior. We cannot afford to relax and assume that things are like they were before this pandemic started over a year ago. We have to continue the measures as we attempt to relax our restrictions to allow people to have some approach to a more normal life. Again, those restrictions are critical. We are experiencing an increase in turnarounds for lab test results. Based on what we're seeing in our contact investigation, most people are being advised at the time of their testing to isolate themselves. And this is very important because they may not hear the results of their tests right away. Public health will not know about them until we receive that test result. So please, if there are reasons why you're getting a lab test for COVID-19, it's very important that you take seriously the instructions given by the laboratory staff, and separate yourself from others to protect you, your family, and the community. Follow public health measures. Everyone should be following public health preventive measures at this point and avoiding crowds. And remember that those outside of our immediate household are individuals for which these measures are very important. That's all that I have today. I want to thank you, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Ms.
No, thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Three weeks ago, we got the brief. We were under 3% positivity rates. When you rebriefed last week, the region was at 10.3, and I think the beach was 10.6 or 10.7. Now, you're telling us the region is 11.8. I think I saw in the paper where the beaches' number was actually 12.4. I think I saw in the paper where the beaches' number was actually 12.4. You can correct me on that, but does that sound about right?
Half the beach, 11.8. You may have a different number than I have. That's the number that I have.
My point being is, despite all the rhetorical guidelines, the data would suggest that we're not getting the compliance. And the reason why I mention this, Mr. Mayor, is that I know she said she couldn't predict. The models don't help them that much. But if you look at this trend line, I'm just thinking the issues that the school board's facing, because they were just on TV, Dr. Fauci this morning, and CDC talking about if you're over 5%, you'd have great risk of opening your school system. So I'm just curious, what, at some point, when we get to August and we're still going up, you know, where is the decision point where we have to act in order so parents know about childcare and all these other issues? I realize the data's helpful, but at some point, you've got to start making some kind of decision with the data that you have. If I could go to Slide 10, this is the emergency department visits, where it says 33% of those visits were positive. Now, on the contact tracing that we're doing, do we have a feel for how much, how, walk that back? And what are we seeing as we do contact tracing on people that test positive? How many more positives come out of that?
I don't have that number for you, but I would say that for the emergency room visits in terms of the percentage positivity, would caution that that is a select population. There's a large proportion of those individuals who are going to the emergency room because they are symptomatic. So we would expect higher, a higher percentage of cases there. But I also think it's a reflection of what is going on in the community, in that we are seeing increasing disease transmission. So I would expect the percentage to be higher there than what we would see in testing the general population. But again, can't correlate that directly with disease transmission rates in general across the population. That said, in terms of the schools, we are working with the schools and consulting with them on their planning efforts. I'm not aware that final decisions have been made. I would hope that with our discussions and efforts that we're talking about, that we will continue to take interactions as a community to reverse this trend and not find ourselves involved with rates as high as what we're discussing now. It is critical to our schools, to our children, to be able to get back to school. We want to reverse this trend so that children can safely enter school and have the education that they need, and so that the rest of our community will be safe.
Can I go? One of the questions wasn't so much that I would expect, I would expect to have higher positivity in a hospital emergency setting, but they get a much quicker return rate saying that they have it versus getting it five, seven, 14 days later after it's too late. So therefore, if you did follow-up contact tracing on people in emergency rooms where they're getting a much quicker turnaround, you get a much better feel from a point of view of what could be happening elsewhere, because your tests are so delayed, you don't know how vulnerable you are. That was my understanding to get insight into contact tracing, because they're knowing pretty quick, usually within 48 hours, if they have it or not. But I'd be interested at a later date just to get information on what we're getting out of our contact tracing efforts, because I think that will be insightful. One last question. Of the people that were, on Slide 12, the far-right column talks about age-stratified case fatalities, and there was no descriptive that it was associated with hospitalization. So that numbers match up with all fatalities. What percentage of the fatalities are congregate living slash nursing home-related?
I don't have an exact number. For one of our local hospitals, approximately half of their hospitalizations. Well, no, I'll take that back. A significant proportion of the deaths that they were seeing, I believe, were related to individuals who would have been in high-risk situations, including long-term care. But I don't have a more recent percentage on that, on what's in that frame.
There's war for long-term care in Virginia Beach fatalities, please.
Mr. Moss, could you repeat that? You had to wait about three seconds before.
If Dr. Lindsay could have a later date, I would like to know of the fatalities that we have, how much of the numbers that are associated with long-term care nursing facilities? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else for Dr. Lindsay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. We're, and welcome, and we are ready for the next speaker.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Sutton from OEM is ready now.
Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a few quick things to update you. City staff numbers. We have had since yesterday 10 new confirmed positive cases reported. So that brings us to 65 total personnel, 58 employees, and seven volunteers. So we now have 43 persons out of work currently. Reopening plans continue to be submitted and reviewed by OEM, OAK Health, Fire Marshal and Health Department. We're nearing the end. We only have a few departments left to review, and those few departments really are at a status quo. Nothing's changing. They're maintaining their current stance of virtual, online management, things like that. This week, we reviewed Public Utilities, the City Clerk, my office, and Parks and Rec Sports Management, and those, they will be moving forward. Two programs I want to make sure that you are aware of. We have been selected by Virginia's Health Equity Work Group that is from the state for their pilot program. The purpose of the Health Equity Work Group is to apply a health equity lens to the Commonwealth of Virginia's COVID-19 response by proactively and reactively providing, identifying, prioritizing resources, decision points impacting at-risk individuals and communities, supporting intentional inclusion of the needs of at-risk individuals and communities within the work group related to preparedness, mitigation, response, and recovery. So Virginia Beach was selected along with, I believe, Portsmouth and Hampton, here in Hampton Roads. What that will do, they have identified, they will be providing us masks and hand sanitizer and educational materials for communities that they designate with the data group they are working with. So we're currently working through with our partners the best options for providing those, the masks, hand sanitizer, and educational material. So we're working with all of our stakeholders to work on the best approach to that. Something that's also going on, the federal CRAFT team arrived yesterday and has started meeting with all of our stakeholders. CRAFT is the COVID Response Assistance Field Team. And that brings with it Health and Human Services, the CDC, FEMA, the Hospital Association, and a whole list of other acronyms to come and leverage ground truth to validate data of what's happening. Because Hampton Roads is considered substantial or a hotspot, the federal government deploys this team and assesses what we are doing to try and get to the root cause and assist the state and locals, local leaders in designing a plan of action. So their visits are going on all week. Virtual visits are going on all week, and we'll be providing a report at the end of this. So we understand that this may be providing some guidance to the governor as well. Just so you're aware, at the local level, they are including stakeholders from emergency management, city leadership, hospital leadership, also our social services, and some of our public safety as well, to get a good handle on things, as well as our laboratories, because some of the key issues obviously have been identified by Dr. Lindsay with the demand of tests. But we're also beginning to see a shortage in the reagent once again. One last thing that we, just to remind you why I'm up here, hurricane sheltering, we are working on that. We've been conducting the walkthroughs on multiple shelter locations to redraw the layouts. Hurricane sheltering in the time of COVID reduces the number of personnel and shelteries that are allowed in there. So we have been going through and reworking our shelters. We're also working on a registration process prior to arriving on the shelter, at the shelter, to help give us another level of assessment. Our pet shelter plan is currently being updated as well, and we are regionally working through the challenges of limited sheltering capacity, the state-managed shelters, the staffing and congregate versus non-congregate sheltering. We will be having a call with the CAOs on Friday. The emergency managers will be putting forth to the CAOs the challenges that we have so that they are aware. And finally, it is hurricane season. Prepare now. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rouse, and then Ms. Henley.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Question, you mentioned the 10 new cases earlier for our city staff. If you could, what departments are being affected the most? And are those 10 new cases from one particular department, or are they spread out, being that we have 43, I guess, workers out of work right now?
They are spread across multiple departments. I can get that breakdown for you, but it's not one single department. It is spread out across many, several departments.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Henley.
Thinking about hurricane season, how are we going to get the word out to the public? I mean, these hurricanes kind of tend to appear quickly. And, you know, if we're having to change where people should go and that kind of thing, how are we going to be getting the word out? Are we doing anything to kind of lay some groundwork ahead of time?
So our shelters are still our shelters. It just means that we may be opening additional shelters, because we'll have to spread folks out. Traditionally, we provide 40 to 60 square feet per person. Red Cross and Health and Human Services are recommending 110 square feet. So that limits the number of folks that we can put. So instead of maybe opening two or three shelters, we may have to open additional shelters in order to support the demand. We will communicate as we always do, using multiple, our partners in the media, our reverse 911 system, social media, all of the modalities we've used in the past to communicate that information.
And is Kellum still the medical-friendly shelter?
Yes, ma'am.
That's still the, okay.
Yes.
That's the first line.
The first one. The fieldhouse is for a category two or above, and we have maintained our connection and communication with the fieldhouse as well.
So that's still the good information to give out?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss.
One of the vulnerable areas in these hurricanes has been Sandbridge because of the vacuum sewer system, as you are familiar. I know you have that today, but I would appreciate it as to what steps we've taken to prevent sewer backup, which was a major issue the last time we had a storm. And as you know, homeowners' policies in Virginia don't cover sewer backup for rental property, which most of that property is. So I'm just curious as to what we've done. We have other, some other sewer pump stations. The water system works, but a vulnerability we've had in certain areas has been sewer pump stations that go offline. And I'm just curious what we've, what lessons learned we had from the last time, and what proactive steps we're taking so that one week and shut them down sooner, or we have fixed them so that we're able to keep them operational? Because that has a big impact, really, it's sewer backup is a big issue that causes.
So I will say two things that have occurred is, after Matthew, a, an alarming system was put in. There's been a lot of education with the homeowners and a lot of corrections to the sewer pits that are out there that homeowners may have attached to incorrectly, things like that. But Public Utilities, I'm sure, would be happy to provide more information.
Because I think that would be good to get out to people, because that's all part of these warnings, because maybe we're not in a position to fix everything, but at least people can be informed of the risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for Aaron, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on something that Mr. Rouse said, and Mr. Lahey had sent me some information on the departments. I don't know, Tom, do you have that info?
I do not have, Mayor, members of council, I don't have that information. I can tell you from memory, of the 65 total cases that the city workforce has experienced over the whole pandemic, 16 were in the police department, 15 were in human services, and 10 were in public works and public utilities. Of the 43 cases that are current, approximately half of those are in police and human services, and the other half are spread across a number of departments. Thank you. Mr. Moss, I could talk, address your issue for Sandbridge if you like.
We, thank you very much.
In addition to making significant improvements in the pits, they also built a pump station down at the far south end of Sandbridge that takes the water from that very, very large condo and directly pumps that to the next pump station. That system, vacuum systems really weren't designed to have huge loads input at the very tail end of them. So that, plus the beach projects that keep the ocean from washing over and flooding the pits, they will be far more resilient in future hurricanes than they have been in the past ones. Thank you very much.
May I, is that all complete now at Sandbridge, or is it still?
No, that's done.
It's all, everything is done, but there was going to be, okay, so the vacuum system was?
Vacuum system is, they've done that pump station, they've done the force main, and they have improved all the pits. Not only have, they have this alarm system that Aaron mentioned, they also moved something called a controller that was down in the pit into a breather box that comes up and puts it out of the pit, and that has improved their performance dramatically. I really would predict that in the very next, in the next major storm, Sandbridge will do vastly better than it has in the past.
That's encouraging. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Deputy Director Steve Culver is going to say some words right now.
Hey, Steve, how you doing?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to provide you just a quick synopsis of, for public safety over the last week. So last Tuesday, as you all are well aware, we had a march and a protest here at City Hall. It began, it began in the school administration parking lot. The protesters went out onto Nemo Parkway, down onto Princess Anne Road, and then here to City Hall. There were about 50 to 75 people that participated in that event. There were two arrests that police made, and there were two people that received summons for being in the roadway. On Friday evening as well, there was a, that protest last Tuesday was permitted, by the way. Then Friday night, there was another march at the Oceanfront that was not permitted. There was a brief meeting prior to the, to the event where Captain Wychendall from the Second Precinct met with one of the organizers prior to the event, taking off there at Rudy Loop, laid out the rules of engagement, et cetera. And shortly thereafter, the march proceeded northbound on Atlantic Avenue. About 25 or so people started moving north a little bit before nine. Police were there, similar to the posture that was taken on July 4th, indicating that the protesters could not access Atlantic Avenue. They, they moved over to the sidewalks, proceeded north, and as the group went down, they, what I would call crisscrossed Atlantic Avenue, staying in the, in the crosswalks as they moved north. As they did that, police reminded the marchers to stay in the crosswalks, stay on the sidewalks, and at intersections that were controlled by signals, to obey the traffic signals there in the, in the crosswalks. At 30th and Atlantic, there was, there was an altercation between a marcher and a police officer. That person was taken into custody, and there were, there are two other arrests that were made at that point. The group turned around at 30th Street and went back south. Again, The group turned around at 30th Street, Street and went back south, again, staying on the sidewalks, in the crosswalks, and crisscrossing east to west, basically at every block as they, as they moved back down Atlantic Avenue. At 17th Street, the, the, the group of protesters stopped briefly, engaged police there at 17th and Atlantic, and then continued south from there. There were two more arrests that were made at about 15th Street as the, as the march moved south. So in total, the, the event lasted just a little over three hours, about three hours and 15 minutes, and there were five arrests made, and there were three citations issued for pedestrian in the roadway. Also on Friday evening, we had, in other parts of the city, two gunshot wounds and a stabbing in the Third and Fourth Precincts. And then on Saturday, as you all are aware, just, just around the corner in Courthouse Estates, unfortunately, we had a, a domestic issue with a, with a shooting and a suicide. And then, again, another unfortunate event on Sunday evening, about a quarter to nine, we had an individual that was struck while riding a bicycle on Blackwater Road. That, that ended up being a fatality, unfortunately. So I'll stand by for any questions you may have, and I've got Deputy Chief Gallagher here as well.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, we'll be joined by Director Friedman, who's going to give us an update on the different emergency housing assistance program that we have in place.
Are we going to leave the COVID topic?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought we were going to address the requests we had, anyway, we had received yesterday from the city manager requesting that, I guess, all of the departments, the, the health departments in the region were asking the localities to take some action, perhaps? Well, I don't know about that. I thought that's what we were going to talk about. But I was just going to suggest or say, this is disturbing. Our numbers have been so good up until the last three, four weeks. We were 3% positivity and under, hovering around, and now we've just shot up, and to hear us described as a hotspot is something I don't think we can just pass by and say, okay, what's the next topic? I think we really have to address it. And I, I think it's time for us, the, the city council, to take some leadership in, in this issue. I don't think it's something we can just leave to our business people to, to, to deal with. And in trying to think of just what we could do, I guess it's my schoolteacher background, you look for the positive things in a child. I think we should recognize all of the work that some of our businesses and, and agencies and so forth are doing to try to make sure their businesses are being operated safely. And I think we should, should give attention to those particular businesses that are doing a really good job. And then maybe others will decide they need to do a good job, too. I know a lot of our businesses are, are putting a lot of effort, spending a lot of money to sanitize, to do all of the things right. And I, I would suggest that we find some way to highlight these things that are being done in the city, that are being done to, to be operating safely. What are our agencies doing? I know our libraries and rec centers and the aquarium are all doing a lot of things to make it safe. Our churches that are now beginning to operate again, what are some of the things that they're doing? Even our individuals, what are people doing to be safe? And if we find some way to highlight this and to share this information so that we can all begin to think more in terms of those things that we should be doing. I really hate for us to all the time talk about, you know, the, the citations and what people are doing wrong, but if we, if we focus on what people are doing right and how more of us can make sure we're doing the right thing, and what are those things we should be doing, and who are the businesses that are doing it right? That's my suggestion. But I really think we have to take some leadership here and not ju, we just can't let it flounder and find ourselves in the headlines as a, as a hotspot. That's not the reputation we want to have.
Okay, Mrs. Henley, if I could just say, I was going to bring this up during council comments. Yesterday, myself, you know, Mr. Dehaney and Mr. Leahy were in on a Zoom call with Centerra, who also was bringing forward a significant, the significance of the problems that we're confronted with. And as part of the discussion, we're talking about as mayors and as elected leaders in the region, you know, to come together and put out messages, maybe collaboratively together, encouraging. It's not only Virginia Beach that's being affected, it's the entire region. And, you know, and, you know, and basically, you know, we, we do have, and as I brought up yesterday, a bit of a dilemma. And yes, we have to do something to curtail, you know, the, you know, the disease process itself with the COVID-19, and obviously, that's the, you know, number one paramount priority. But the other thing that has been evolving over time are the collateral considerations of depression, su, increase in suicides, increase in alcohol, and drug abuse, domestic violence, and many other problems. And once again, we have the dilemma coming up, and Mr. Moss identified with the schools, because once again, we have to protect the children and the workers and the teachers, but by the same token, you know, children are, you know, are not meant to be confined for prolonged periods, and, you know, the burden it puts on parents in terms of returning to society. So we do have a multiple, multi-layered group of problems that we have to deal with going forward. But obviously, it comes down to a thing about personal responsibility. You know, and, you know, the large segment of the problems are the bars and the socialization of, where we're especially being adversely affected with, you know, the, the people in their twenties and thirties, family gatherings, and, you know, people are just breaking out after prolonged confinement with, with the COVID. But once again, be sure that, you know, we as, you know, the regional leaders are discussing it, getting a joint message out, you know, asking people, because it's going to be, you know, hopefully, this is going to be a short-term inconvenience for a long-term gain of, you know, public safety, but we're working in that regard. Mr. Rouse?
I would like to just echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Henley. I think she said something that's very, that stands out to me, is we do need to take, and as you put it, Mayor, more of a leadership role on not only this pandemic, but also encouraging the businesses that are doing all the right things, but reinforcing that by ways we come up with, that, that we are acknowledging what they're doing and encouraging the businesses who are slow to take up some of these precautions to, to come along. But also, I think another, you know, pandemic, so to speak, that we're dealing with is, is the social issues that we are faced with, not only in Virginia Beach, but in our region and in our state and in our country. Virginia City of Virginia Beach needs to take more of a leadership role also in acknowledging all the social structures and issues, systemic, systemic issues that we are facing today. That is directly aligned with the pandemic as we see it as well, with the way it is affecting underserved and disadvantaged communities as well, but it's affecting our community as a whole. And so we can't separate the two from the pandemic of, of a virus and the pandemic of the social issues that we're facing today. So I challenge this council also to take more of a leadership role in, in confronting the issues we are faced with today.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley.
The point I've made before, and I'll make it again today, when you look at our numbers and you take at the fact that a substantial portion of our population is in the military, and they're operating under much stricter guidelines than we are, and they're under direct orders to follow them, so when you look at the numbers, that makes those numbers look much worse than they are, because you have to take out of that denominator population the people that are a much higher degree of compliance, the general, other general population. So those numbers are more alarming than they look on the surface when you start controlling for who's not in those numbers and who is doing a much higher compliance, and they're in those age groups. So this, so to Mrs. Henley's point, this has tremendous implications. If these numbers keep going up, I don't think anyone's, I don't see how schools are opening in September with kids in the classroom. I don't know how we get there in a responsible fashion, and if we don't have people going to school and daycare and all that, we have major employment issues. And you've heard many people say the number one thing the country faces, getting back to work? Education and daycare. Those are the two critical path items to getting the country back to work. So I, I said this on my Facebook, I said it last year, is we can put all the stuff out, but in the end, people have to have a sense of personal responsibility. This is science. Other things are, issues are behavioral, but this is a science thing. This is not a, don't wear masks, that's my freedom. This is about getting the country back to work. It's a science, and we just have to, and I do admit, we should applaud people doing well, but people have to understand that this is as much a threat of anything. I mean, this is, this is serious business, and it's, we can still get on top of it. We've, we've overcome worse situations than this in our country, believe it or not, but, but getting kids back, getting us where we can get the schools open and getting people back to work is fundamental to our ability to deliver the very services that people want us to address. Pretty soon, everybody's going to be disadvantaged if this continues, and so we'll all be helping each other. But anyway, I just wanted to point out that when you look at these numbers, they are even worse than they look when you take into consideration who's not represented in them.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Well, talking about it is great, but now we, it's time for action, because the, the, the spread is so exponentially high, and, you know, even waiting a few days exposes a whole lot more people. So I don't think there's a whole lot of time left to just sit around and talk about it. I really think it's time for us to come up with an action plan.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, Mr. Belucci.
Certainly agree with the comments that were expressed previously by my colleagues here, but I wonder, just for the sake of public information, if Mr. Stiles or the city manager could share with the council and with the public who's viewing what authority lies with, with, with different governing bodies. For example, there are limitations about what the City of Virginia Beach can impose with regard to public health and some of the restrictions that are on the table. I just think it's good for us to all be on the same page, and for my own information, and, and also for the public. Where, where do those lines, where are they drawn?
It's rather difficult to answer that question in the abstract, in the sense that if there are specific enforcement ideas that council wishes to consider, we'd have to evaluate those individually. Across the state, typically, the emergency orders, executive orders of the governor have been the touch point for actions taken by local governments across the locality. The city could itself, could also, also has the power, the city manager has the power to declare an emergency and could impose some additional restrictions associated with that emergency, but primarily, local governments have been reliant on, and under Dillon's rule, are reliant on the actions of the state, in this case, the government under his, his executive orders.
Thank you. Okay. But, you know, you know, this will be a work in progress. We, we are talking about certain things that we can be doing, and hopefully, we will be putting them into place in the very, very near future. Like I said, we did address this with Centerra yesterday, who is obviously a key player here. We're discussing, you know, among the cities, what we can do collaboratively, but, you know, once again, this is a longer-term process that we anticipated. You know, this was supposed to be a couple of weeks of confinement, but that was months ago. But once again, you know, we're dealing with the situation, and ultimately, it's going to come down to personal responsibility and us responding, you know, to them, and efforts, everything, that, you know, we're working with media and communications right now to get the word out, and, you know, you know, we will be very proactive, you know, going forward.
I sure hope so.
Thank you. Very good points, Mrs. Henley. Okay, moving on.
Right now, Director Friedman is going to come up front to give us an update on our emergency housing assistance programs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Manager, nice to meet you. I'm going to, given the conversation, I'm going to try to do this with my mask on, but if my, if I'm not understanding, understandable, please, I will take it off. So I wanted to update you on our housing assistance plans, because it has been several months, and things are changing a lot. I also wanted to provide some context, because we have a lot of decisions to make and a lot of opportunities. So we go to the next slide. So our role as a department has, we do multiple things. We mostly facilitate things occurring within the city. We support our Housing Advisory Board, which is in the process of developing housing strategy for you. We lead the homeless continuum of care. We coordinate the Beach Community Partnership, and we fund services and housing developments, mostly done by nonprofits and housing developers. But we also do directly operate some activities, the biggest being Housing Choice voucher program, code enforcement, or an occupied rehabilitation program. We manage the Housing Resource Center, and we do outreach and assessment for the homeless. Next slide. Before the pandemic, we were in the process and had recently briefed you in February about development of a comprehensive strategy to address our housing in neighborhoods going into the future. We are working on an update of the housing study to give you a picture of where, what our housing conditions were, and we're going to do that with your guidance, our Housing Advisory Board's guidance. And this was also going to be part of the comprehensive plan, coordinated with the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. We also briefed you about a unsheltered homeless reduction strategy, because that was in process at the time and a major concern in the community, number of people on the street, and having an impact on businesses at the resort area. Next slide, please. We wrote to you, city manager, Acting City Manager Leahy wrote to you on May 22nd with suggesting three cri, three objectives that we wanted to balance. The need for emergency assistance, the need to continue what we're already doing in housing programs, and the need to maintain and increase support for the supply of affordable housing into the future. So that was given on May 22nd. Really, since May 22nd, so much has changed, it's hard to even understand. First of all, we have now the ongoing movement for racial equity that was not in existence on May 22nd. We have the new funding for housing assistance. At the time, we wrote that letter, we had $2.2 million, now we have over $4 million. We had not, we had just started our first program to provide assistance, and now we've completed that. And the state actually had not begun any programs, but now, on June 29th, they started their rental, rental and mortgage assistance program. So the whole context of where we were on May 22nd is, in my opinion, significantly So we were working towards a, before the pandemic and before the nationwide movement towards racial equity, Virginia Beach was developing a housing strategy that wanted to meet the needs of its residents for affordable home, housing, make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring, and promote vibrant, well-maintained neighborhoods. But since then, I think we have to readjust. We have to adjust our goals to the new reality, whatever that turns out to be. We definitely have to meet our new emergency and emerging needs for housing assistance, take advantage of the new funding, adjust to a rapidly changing environment, and definitely plan to do all of this through a lens of equity for all people. I wanted to show you a little bit of the financial context which, within which we're working. The Federal Cares Act has delivered funding through three different channels at, at least, in fact, four. The first one HUD, congressional funding went to HUD, which came to the city specifically designated for housing programs. The second one is yours, you yourselves, as a council, allocated some funding for housing assistance. In addition, Congress gave money to the state, which gave it to, to the city and was designated for the motel sheltering program that we're using for people experiencing homelessness. In addition, the state has given federal funding directly. In addition, the state has given federal funding directly to nonprofits for housing assistance. So we have a multiple, multiple, a complex set of funding going on. This, the federal funding to date, really about $4.6 million when you consider all the different streams I outlined there. You can go to the next slide. The state has given money for motel funding, for the state rental and mortgage relief program, and we're expecting additional state funding for housing assistance as well. And I want to point out the role of community organizations, both the United Way and the Hampton Roads Community Foundation provided immediate cash assistance to our residents. Churches and nonprofits have enhanced or created assistance program in addition to the schools feeding program. And an important thing is that we rely on our skilled nonprofit partners to deliver many of the services to the homeless and emergency housing assistance programs. As I said, most of what we do is support and facilitate the delivery of programs. So we've sought, done several things to try to understand what community needs are. We did a needs assessment survey in April. We took applications for our rental assistance program in May. We, we are starting to see what happens with the state rental assistance program. We've done regular consultations with realtors and apartment managers. We've looked at national information. And in addition, yesterday, we had a really good discussion with our Housing Advisory Board members about what they say in the community. Given all that, I can't tell you that I really have a good grasp on community needs today and what they're going to evolve to. I think the main thing that we see is that needs are going to continue and they're going to be longer term. There's so many ameliorating things that the federal government has done with unemployment insurance and other things, that some of the housing crises are going to be postponed into the future. And we can't just have a short-term response. So there are three types of needs for housing, depending on your status. One is if you're experiencing homelessness, two, if you're a renter, and three, if you're a homeowner with a mortgage. I'm going to ask our housing administrator, homeless services administrator Ruth Hill to talk to you about the, that staff, that information regarding people experiencing homelessness and renters. Ruthie? Go to the next slide for Ruth.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and welcome, City Manager. Thank you, Andy. Again, I am Ruth Hill. I'm the Housing Programs Administrator, and I'm over the homeless services here in the city of Virginia Beach. So the pandemic has been difficult for, as you can imagine, those most vulnerable in our community, including those experiencing homelessness. And so we took on the challenge early on, and in, on March 20th, we began to hotel persons experiencing homelessness that were most vulnerable and those that were of, that were elderly into hotels. And we began doing that so that we could put them, get them off the street and keep them safe and healthy. And then we also minimized the people that were in our emergency shelter at the HRC so that they could safely live in, on site. Many of the people experiencing homelessness have, have and continue to have underlying medical conditions, so that was important for us to, to separate them for their health. And then we also wanted to be concerned about the public health for the community. So immediately, we took people, as I mentioned, off, out of the shelters and put them into hotels. So we minimize, we can house 51 persons at the HRC, and we have now 24 in the congregate shelter. So we reduced it by 50%. We have currently are housing about 70 households, up to about 86 people in three different hotels in the city of Virginia Beach. We also are planning on moving people back into housing from those hotels. Our goal is not to place people into hotels and then move them back into homelessness, but our goal is to actually put them in a permanent housing program if we can. And so we have partnered with three of our nonprofit partners to do what we call rapid rehousing, and we've provided funding that was provided with some of the, the money that Andy mentioned, so that they can rapidly rehouse and give a six-month subsidy for persons to move out from the hotels and into a permanent housing solution while they continue to look for, for, for a job so that they can maintain that housing. There are two ways for people to continue to access our services. One is through the regional homeless crisis hotline, and the other is through our outreach team that is on the streets, their boots on the ground every single day. They are PPE'd up, and they are working to ensure that those that are unsheltered are provided with the services that they need. So what we do know about renters is that many people have lost their jobs as a result of the pandemic. And we saw that happening in March, early March. But we also know, as all of you do, that the state moratorium on eviction was just passed at the end of June. And so what we found, that many people that were able to collect unemployment with that extra $600 a week were able to maintain their housing and did not immediately need the funds. So they, their crisis was actually delayed, and they were able to, some were able to work with landlords, put their, their rents in forbearance and make payment plans. And so the federal assistance definitely helped them, helped them. So the crisis is, has been delayed, as Andy mentioned. So we started our eviction, excuse me, eviction prevention assistance program, the EPA program, on April 29th, and we did short-term rental assistance for rental arrears and one month's rent. The application was open, the eligibility was open to people that were at or below 80% AMI, but we did target those persons from 0% to 50% AMI, which are people that, I believe it's 41,250 if we're a household of four persons. And so you'll see in a later slide that we did meet our goal of meeting the needs of the 0% to 50% AMI category. So we just closed our Phase 1, and the summary results I'll go over in a moment. We are waiting on Phase 2 as, to see the results of the program that Andy mentioned, that DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, I'll try not to talk in acronyms for you, City Manager, had put out from the state level. That funding, under our leadership, has gone to Four Kids, which is a regional provider. Four Kids is the nonprofit that runs the Regional Houses Crisis Hotline. And so they are, they have launched that program on the 28th, and we are waiting to hear back from them, from their data, to determine what EPA 2 may look like and how we will administer that. If we even administer it ourselves, if Four Kids is willing to do it on our behalf and we can pass the funds on to them, we may, we may do it that way. There is a hotline number. We're continuing to use the hotline number. That is a number that is widely distributed amongst the region for people to access those dollars. So here are the results. We had 587 applicants that came in. We were only open, if you remember, for five days because of the volume. We had over 600, but of the 631 that we received, there were 587 that were actually, that were actually screened correctly. We served 21% or 125 of those households, and you can see, see the amount that we paid in arrears there and then the total rent subsidy. Remember, we were paying one month's in arrears and then one month's of rental subsidy going forward. It was a little bit over $300,000. And so there were various reasons why people did not receive assistance. Some just did not ever submit the documentation that was necessary in order for us to ensure that they were eligible. Second, there were many attempts, we did at least a minimum of three attempts for people that did not respond, to ensure that they continued to need the, the, the service. But after three, and sometimes four attempts, if they didn't respond, then we did not go back a fifth time. Some were ineligible due to, they didn't have arrears or they were over income, they were over 80% AMI. Some just self-resolved. They were able with their unemployment check to make that arrears and move on on their own, which is good news. Some just decided they did not need or wanted our assistance. And then some, because of multiple issues, that one month's arrear and one month's rent assistance were not going to be sufficient, we referred them to our homeless prevention program because they needed some case management to go along with funding, financial assistance. So here is the graph that shows you these numbers that I just mentioned. So you can see that of the 321 applications that were not completed, 34% were non-responsive or refused the assistance, and 21% declined it. Of those 266 that were approved, 21% or the 125 were actually assisted. And then the 20% did not submit the documents or over income. So here's the numbers that I wanted you to be sure that you saw. So 67% of the people were between 0% and 50% AMI. So we really did meet that goal of that population being the, the people that were targeted and the needs were met first. And you can see that 73 persons or 58% were actually families with minor children. So another thing that we did was we compiled the information by household. And I'm pleased to say that we helped people all over the city, which is, I think, good news. We, you can see the highest number, 27 households were in the Oceanfront District, 23451, but it's spread out across the zip codes in the city. So just a, kind of an overview of what we continue to do in our prevention program. We have been providing of prevention assistance since 2018, when we opened the HRC. And we received support from yourselves, city council members. We received money from BB Homes Now Foundation and other sources to provide funding for people that need prevention assistance. The, the demand has actually significantly increased, as you can imagine. And since EPA 1 has, has been completed, we're just seeing in the last two weeks, the numbers are higher and higher. So it's interesting, as the time goes on, our, our data is proving out anecdotally that the numbers are high. I do not have the data at this time. We have, just because of some staffing issues going on in my department, but we will be glad to share the data with the, of homeless prevention program in the future. Questions for me?
Any questions, Mr. Moss?
This is one I've had before. AMI, that we're using the region AMI, correct?
We use the, the federal standards for AMI. Area median income is from HUD. But it is a regional, it is, comes down from HUD on a regional, we are part of Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads area, correct?
It's not the median family income in Virginia Beach?
No, sir. It's for the region.
Right. And we're not controlled, we could have a higher percentage of that number than what we have. That's not federally mandated, correct?
Ask that question another way. I'm not sure I understood your answer.
Well, we're saying that we've got people that were within 80% of the AMI, but our goal was to do everybody in 60. My point is, the federal doesn't, we could say 90, and the federal law wouldn't preclude that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, the reason why I mention that is in our annual budget presentation that we get, we note that over 50% of the people who rent are paying more than 35% of their income and are financially stressed.
Correct.
We know rents in our city are more expensive. So when we say that we served all the people under that standard, it really isn't a standard that's relevant to Virginia Beach. We should be using the median family income because our prices for rent and stuff are geared not to the region, but to the city. So we, while we met that, that goal, if we really judged ourselves by a more realistic about, in our community, we really didn't serve as many people as we should have because of what stuff costs here. We set a standard and they just fell above it. But if we set 80% of our median income or 60% of the city's median income, more people would have been eligible that we turned away.
So I, I hear what you're saying, but there is an FMR that is just for Virginia Beach, which is a rent calculation just for our area. I just looked at it yesterday, Mr. Moss. I wish I could quote it. I know it went up at least $50 this year from when it was. But, so we do also look at, at, at that FMR, which is the rent standard for Virginia Beach. And we didn't use it for this program, but we could. So there is, there is that number available to us.
My only point I'm making is that we are congratulating ourselves, which is a good thing that we served a lot of people. But relative to that median income being used in Norfolk or Portsmouth, there's a much bigger population that's being served and on a much different rate basis. I'm just saying, we have a bigger need than what that number would suggest. That's just the point I was trying to make. And I think, remember, you may recall, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Virginia Tech Housing Study that we did. I recommend the City Manager to look at that. These numbers wouldn't surprise you if you went back and refreshed yourself with that study because the private sector jobs that are in the city relative to the cost of rent is a huge disparity. So I'm just trying to make sure that the viewing public realizes that when you said there's a longer term, much more structural problem ahead of us, there really is. And this statistical look would give you that we're in better shape than we really are. And I'm not, I'm not, you've done great work. I'm just saying is, that there's a lot of stuff behind the PowerPoint slide that would, as Andy said, we really don't have our hands on what the problem is. But if you start looking at some of the demographic consensus track data, track the Virginia Tech study, there's a lot of macro level data that gives you great insight to realize that the beach for the top 20% of the income people is a great place. Everybody else is struggling with a crutch. And so I, and it's hard for the top 20% to pay all the bill. So I just want to make sure that we didn't walk away from this presentation thinking, and no, that wasn't your intent.
No.
That, that there aren't still a lot of people who didn't get their needs met.
Correct.
And I just, and I don't know how to solve all that right now, but I think, and it comes down to jobs and better paying jobs. But, but there are a lot of folks out there still hurting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tower.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tower and Mr. Mayor. My question is, and I have a few line, a few questions. I know when we first initiated the EPA, that program filled up in, what, in two days, I think it was?
Six, six, sir.
Six days. And so that would lead me to believe there's a, a lot more people who are in need than we could take on at the moment. So my first question would be, how do you, how did you align that with reaching your goal, knowing that there's probably a lot more people who needed assistance for this type of program?
So, Mr. Rouse, that's part of the, the presentation that we're giving today, that right now, the state rental assistance program is operative in Virginia Beach. Anyone who needs assistance with the rent that was, problem was caused by the pandemic, should be in contact with the Four Kids number that Ruthie's got up there on the screen. That is currently available to our Virginia Beach residents. And one of the things we're going to evaluate is, how is that subscribed to? Or is there, is there more demand for that than the funding is available? And we'll work with them to determine whether we should supplement that funding or operate a related program. But we absolutely are committed to understanding the need and trying to meet it with whatever resources we have.
All right. So can you explain to me the, and I just want to be really clear, because I'm a strong supporter of Four Kids, actually been to some of their, some of their fundraisers in the past. But I know Four Kids' mission is, is to make sure they eradicate homelessness for kids, hence the name Four Kids. So how is it, you know, if they're young adults or young men and women who, who necessarily don't have kids, their, their go-through is the Four Kids nonprofit foundation in order to get housing assistance?
Yes, sir. Four Kids operates a variety of homeless assistance programs for the region as a whole. The hotline serves all populations, and the state rental assistance program serves all populations. So there is no lack of resources, depending on what type of household you are.
So is, if the people in our, our city who are seeking the EPA program that we designated here in our city, they don't go through the state for that or Four Kids for that. They go through our, our city program for that, right?
No, sir. At this time, that would, they would, the only program available is the state program.
So the program that we allocated money to, which was what, for, to start at the EPA?
Yes, sir.
But that was, is, is ran by someone else?
No, we ran that one. We've completed that with the 600 that Ruthie went over with you. We've completed that with the 600 that Ruthie went over with you. And then on June 29th, the state program started. And we're waiting to get the data, as Ruthie said, to see what the demand for that is, if they have the resources to meet that demand. And depending on how that all works out, what state funding is available, we'll try to keep the, the supply of resources to meet the demand, whether we fund them to continue that program or we set up a second round of EPA. But we don't need to have two rental programs at once because that would just cause confusion.
So we can, we, I guess, through the CARES Act funding, which we'll get to later, we could set up a second round of EPA that could be run from our cities.
Yes, sir. That, that's one option we could do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower and then Ms. Henley.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman and Ms. Hill for all your great work. I also am a great admirer of Four Kids, but I just thought I would ask the question. On page 14, slide 14, you say you've got contracts with three nonprofits to help hotel shelter residents. I just thought maybe I'd give them a plug. People ask me all the time, who, who should I be supporting in this time of need? And I try to give them a variety of names of those. Can you ID those?
Yes, sir. Judeo-Christian Outreach Center, Samaritan House, and the LGBT Life Center are the three nonprofits that will be doing that work.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
On slide 20, the households that were assisted by ZIP code, there weren't any in 23457. Is that because there's not sufficient outreach that far down? Or do you have any insight?
I don't have any insight in that, ma'am. We did have, I think, a robust outreach program on Facebook that reached over 10,000 households. We did all the media out, things we could do. It may just be there were very few or no applications. It'd be hard for me to know at this point.
We'll just have to make sure the information gets everywhere.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll talk to Mr. Doucette.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Just wondering if there's, the housing crisis hotline, if there's a way, it could be something that people could remember, you know, how a catchy little 757, you know, I'm just throwing out housing, but if we could work on, see if we could find an easier way to remember the hotline rather than those numbers. That way, anybody could remember it and pass it along easily in trying to figure out where that, what that number is.
Sure, we'll take a look at that.
Thought I would throw that out, would be really, I think it'd be a good thing to have.
Right.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Wilber.
Good afternoon, Mr. Friedman. Thank you and Ms. Hill for your presentation. It's good to know that, you know, during these difficult times, that someone is thinking about the least of these. And so I'm really appreciative of the work that you're doing. My question is related to the increase of homelessness. Have you seen an increase? I'm sure you have. What is that number?
Ma'am, it would be very difficult to count that number right now. Part of it is because of what we've done with, as Ruthie reported, that the most vulnerable people on the street have now been put into hotels. We do have demand for our homeless prevention program that Ruthie said is increasing, but we don't have a count. And right now, there are people transitioning in all phases of crisis. Some are losing, you know, have lost jobs but haven't lost housing yet and have some savings. And so I wouldn't be able to report that. Now, in January, assuming we're able to do this, we'll do our annual point in time count. And that would be the, the best time to see if there's a big change. I don't have a way to tell you if there's a big change right now.
So I would assume that, and I'm, and I'm not sure, but in terms of accessing resources through, I guess, the Housing Resource Center, have you seen or do you know of the data at that level or no?
Yes, ma'am. That's what, in the homeless prevention program, there's definitely increased demand. And as soon as our staff get back into the office, we're going to give you a report on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Last question.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Moss.
You mentioned the state eviction thing ended on 28 June, but if I remember correctly, the forbearance program deals with all housing that are rental things are done under, with federal credit financing or through HUD?
Correct.
And I think that was, does that end in September? Was that, and how many of our housing units or rental units fall within that federal provision?
That would be rental housing. So that's under our rental housing unit. And so our households, most of our households are not under federal compliance. Most of our households go, have private landlords that they are renting with, so they don't meet that criteria for that federal forbearance.
Okay, so they're not the vouchers and they're not?
But Section 8 is under that. So we have a whole section of Section 8.
I thought people accepted to take, take the federal voucher, even if they want credit, we're also underneath that. Is that correct?
So there are, there is a reasonable number of apartment projects in the city that do have a federal financing component and are subject to that forbearance.
Even though they're not Section 8 because they got a credit? That's correct. It'd be nice to know the future date, just what that is. I think also it applies to VA homes for mortgages as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? Okay, moving ahead, Andy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So we talked, the third group is homeowners with mortgages. We know some homeowners have started to fall behind, but there are very numerous reasons why homeowners won't face foreclosure for many months, some not until the late in the fall. There's federal forbearance and there's also foreclosure requirements that require three to four months of being behind before foreclosure can be initiated. So we think, and so the first need is going to be for people who are not in a mortgage that has any federal component. And so we're going to target our program, which we hope to start in August, to that group. And then we'll see how things roll out. But we want to be prepared because we want to be able, be in a position to prevent foreclosures. But this is one that I think is going to happen over the next six to 12 months and not right away. Okay, next slide. So we are going to start our short-term mortgage assistance program that will be run by our housing development division with Karen Pachillo, targeted to those without the federally-backed mortgages. We will have an online screening and it'll be part of the comprehensive cities application process that Deputy City Manager Williams is working on. And also, the state program does have a mortgage component to it. We're going to cooperate very closely with them. If they get applications for mortgage assistance, they may refer those to us and we'll together evaluate who can do the most to assist people. The program that the state has designed is going to be different than what we would design. There probably going to be different eligibility. They have their own ideas and so, but we're going to cooperate closely with, with them and see how the applications go. So we did do a lot to get the word out. I certainly heard your comments about how important that is. On the left, you can see Facebook people viewed, 15,000 people viewed our state mortgage assistance program, Facebook posts, and 10,000, 12,000 viewed the one about our EPA program. We've used all available media on our mailing list to get the word out to everyone and we'll continue to do that. And we also do promote resources that are not our own. The HUD and VHDA resources are important for people to get access to as well. So we have a great opportunity. A lot of the funding we've received is dedicated to people who are experiencing homelessness. And so we can use those funds, hopefully, at least to make a dent in ongoing homelessness and maybe reduce it. We have a lot of work with all of the different providers. We don't want to duplicate and have double dipping happening. But we also have to do a lot in a short timeframe. We've had help from exemptions from the hiring fees for temporary contractual work to do these programs. We had a loan of library staff. We still have one library staff who are working for us. But our nonprofit partners are stretched as well with new funding. There's just not an unlimited amount of work that can be done. And we need to do more for accounting, our contract management, and a coordination and oversight. So next step, so we're going to do, we're always doing two things at once. We're putting programs together and financing them. We're trying to refine them to meet the needs as they continue to emerge, as we continue to understand them. But at the same time, we know we need a policy approach, a longer term view that we were working on before, the housing and neighborhood strategy, combined with this emergency assistance change and the pandemic influence on it. So we're going to be back to you and before, after we go through our housing advisory board and the planning commission, to try and bring an integrated approach to both the long and short-term needs of our community for housing assistance. And I just want to give you an update on Housing Resource Center and how it's operating today. During the pandemic, we, as Ruthie said, we reduced density in the shelter and we closed day services, which is our walk-in services. We've now reopened them partially and we have a low demand for them, but they're still available to people. Our health clinic, which is in the center, is open by appointments. And people still can access services through the housing crisis hotline, but not through walk-ins. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have. Thank you.
Any questions at this point? All right, thanks for a very, you provide a very valuable service to our community. Helps make Virginia Beach great. Thank you very much to you and your crew, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Right now, we're going to have Director Hilliard from the HR Department and also Deputy Chief Patrick Gallagher come to give you an update and provide you some information as it relates to our police internal affairs investigation and also our IRP, our investigative review panel.
Okay, welcome, Regina.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. A lot has been said about the need for a citizen review panel for the police department. So thank you for the opportunity to come before you and discuss how our citizen review panel operates. The Investigation Review Panel, or IRP, is a group of citizens tasked with reviewing the investigations that have already been conducted by the police department. And their review is to ensure that the investigations are complete and factually accurate. So the citizens do not conduct the actual investigation. They are responsible for the review of the entire investigation on behalf of citizens. There are no employees on the IRP. I'm presenting because the IRP is supported by the Department of Human Resources, just as we support some other panels, including the Personnel Board and the Human Rights Commission. But after I finish my portion of the presentation, Susan Mayo, the Chair of the IRP, would like to have an opportunity to make a few comments. The IRP is appointed by you, by City Council. There are seven members. I believe I saw three members here today. Susan Mayo is our Chair. If you could just, Barbara Booker-Williams is here and William Hurst is here. Oh, and Noni is here. Thank you. Hard to see behind a mask. According to a 2001 Department of Justice report, there are four basic types of police oversight boards. The first type consists of citizens actually conducting the investigation of police misconduct. The second consists of police investigating allegations and citizens reviewing the findings to determine whether or not the findings should be accepted. Under the third type, complainants appeal the findings of the police department to a citizen group. And that group reviews the findings and makes recommendations. And the fourth type is really not citizen-led. It involves having an auditor review the investigative process and they would report on the thoroughness and fairness of the process that was used. So as you can see, our investigative review, our internal panel really falls under type three. So the police department is conducting the investigation and then the IRP is reviewing the investigation at the request of a citizen. So let's talk about how our process works for a while. The IRP process starts by the citizen issuing a complaint to the police department. The police would investigate the complaint and they would notify the complainant of the outcome. And they, when they notify the complainant, they also provide the complainant with information about the Investigation Review Panel. When police provides that information, they also send notification to Human Resources. Human Resources follows up by also reaching out to the complainant to let them know about the IRP. We started that duplicative process about three years ago. And that was at the request of then-police chief Jim Severa. He thought that it would be a good idea for the citizens to hear from someone outside of the police department to let them know that they do have the opportunity to request review by the IRP. So if a citizen takes us up on that and they decide that they would like to have the opportunity for an IRP, they would submit their request to the IRP. And the first thing that we would do, HR would take that request and we will send the request to the city attorney's office. The reason we do that is because we first need to determine whether there are any outstanding criminal or civil proceedings still in play. And if there are, we would notify the citizen that we need to delay reviewing their case until 30 days, until within 30 days of their proceedings being completed. All right? If there are no outstanding proceedings, then we would continue by giving the complaint to the IRP, along with a summary of the police investigation. The IRP would then look at that information to see if the complaint meets the criteria of being, rising to the level of abuse. They are looking for whether or not this complaint actually meets the criteria for the, the IRP to actually review the case. Okay? So some examples of what they're going to be looking for is, did the complaint involve excessive physical force? Or was there a brandishing of a firearm? Those are some of the types of things that they're going to be looking for. They want to, they will review cases that involve excessive force or abuse of authority. So if the panel then determines that the criteria is met to review or have a hearing of that information, one of five things will happen with that hearing. The IRP will then decide that, one, we agree with the findings of the police department, or they could advise the city manager that, you know, the information is, was not reasonably grounded. We see the facts of it, but we don't understand how that finding was made. They could advise the city manager that the investigation is incomplete, such as the complainant talked about some witnesses that were, that were there and saw what happened, but when the IRP went through the investigation, they did not see any mention of that witness. Then they would say that it is incomplete. The IRP could conclude that the complaint is not appropriate for review by the IRP. I don't think that I have actually seen that happen during the time that I have been providing assistance to the IRP. Or the IRP could recommend a change in policy or practice. So just to recap a few key points on this. One is that the IRP is a review agency. It does not conduct the investigation. And cases can only be reviewed, they only have the potential to be reviewed if it is requested by the citizen. If there are any pending criminal or civil charges, then we would have to ask the complainant to resubmit once those have been completed. And cases that are not considered to be an abuse And cases that are not considered to be an abuse of authority or serious misconduct are not heard by the IRP. So I want you to have a feel for what results from that. Looking at the entire calendar year of 2019, Human Resources provided 58 notifications to complainants to ensure that they knew about the IRP. So this is after the Police Department has completed the investigation, they have submitted information about the IRP, and then we are following up. We did that 58 times in 2019. Two citizens responded, asking to have their case reviewed, but they had pending criminal or civil proceedings. So we asked them to come back to us when those were complete. Another two had nothing pending, so their case was reviewed by the IRP. The review happens so that the IRP can determine whether a full hearing will happen. When the here, when the review was occurring, the IRP found that the complaint did not meet the threshold for abuse of authority or serious misconduct. So as a result, for 2019, there were no hearings held. Okay? So so far in 2020, as of June 2020, 27 notifications have gone out. Four have responded, asking to have their case reviewed, but there are pending proceedings. Another citizen had nothing pending, so their case was reviewed by the IRP, but upon review, the panel found that the complaint did not meet the threshold for abuse of authority. So so far in 2020, we have not had a hearing. So we have a willing group of citizens who want to do what they can for the community. And with that in mind, the IRP does feel that there are some changes that could be made to make them, to make them more effective, to make the citizens have an opportunity to have, to express their concerns before an independent group. So the first suggestion involves the, the complainants and making sure that they have an idea upfront, how long it will take before the Police Department gets back to them with a response on their, their complaint. So we are suggesting that the Police Department let them know early on about how long it's going to take for that investigation to occur. We don't want the complainant to feel as if they are not important or they are not being valued because it is taking so long for, for the response to come back from the Police Department. The IRP also recommends that we discontinue the step of determining if the complaint rises to the level of abuse or serious misconduct. So instead, the IRP would hear all of the complaints that do not have pending proceedings. Third, the panel is diverse, but expanding membership could further enhance their diversity. They also want to use social media to make sure that the community is aware that they do exist, and also to kind of set the tone that it is okay to ask for that added review by the citizen group. We currently provide City Council with an annual report of IRP activity, and information is provided to the city manager on actions taken by the Police Department as a result of review by the IRP. But there is a recommendation that actions taken by the Police Department be clearly identified to the city manager and that we display those actions on the IRP website. Additionally, we would make this a requirement and incorporate that added step into the policy and procedures for the IRP. To provide clarity that the Police Review Board is comprised of citizens, the IRP recommends a name change to incorporate citizen in their title. And finally, the IRP noted that most of the City Council Boards and Commissions have a City Council liaison. And so they are, they would appreciate your consideration of providing a liaison for this group as well. That way, there is someone among you who can speak to the activities of the group at any point in time. All right, so with that, the Chair of the IRP, Susan, would like to make a few comments, and then Pat Gallagher will come up to complete the presentation.
Susan, welcome and thank you for your service, along with your esteemed group of colleagues. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Virginia Beach Council, City Manager, welcome, and City staff. As Mayor Dyer and Regina mentioned, I'm currently the Chair of the IRP, and I would like to thank Regina for the great overview she gave today. And if you've not previously read it, there is a document called the City of Virginia Beach Investigation Review Panel Policies and Procedures. I think this will give you a lot of great background on how we are structured and how we're able to operate. Since the IRP was restructured in 2012, and some of the council members may remember, I, along with my fellow panel members, were appointed by City Council, have worked together to ensure that the conclusions of the Virginia Beach Police Department's Internal Affairs Office, investigation involving abuse of authority or other serious misconduct are complete, accurate, and factually supported. I would like to again recognize our panel members, who actually have worked very hard since 2012. Barbara Booker-Williams, will you stand, Barbara? She is currently our Vice Chair. William Hurst has served us since 2012. And Noni Abrahano, again, since 2012. We had some members that couldn't be with us today. Former Police Officer Brian Dewan and Robert Beasley, who is a real estate businessperson, and our newest member, Cliff Rice. Some of you may know Cliff from previous commissions. He joined us in December of 2019. I would also like to thank the staff of the HR Department here in the city, because they assist the panel with the administrative support by scheduling our meetings. And even though we haven't had as many meetings these past two years, we were, we've been pretty busy over the last eight. They provide documentation for our review, including our case reports and any other pertinent information. Also, a special thanks to the Virginia Beach City Attorneys, who provide us with our legal, any legal advice we may seek regarding our case. The IRP members have a unique and critical role as public servants in reviewing citizen complaints. The preparation that's involved for hearings includes time, dedication, and a commitment to thoroughly review each case with objectivity, fairness, comprehensiveness, while maintaining the confidentiality of all the case details. We have been committed to being complete, thorough, and accurate in our reviews. Our panel, unlike probably others, does not have regularly scheduled meetings. However, we meet as often as needed when a request for review has been submitted. We look forward, as Regina outlined, we had a phone meeting last week. We came up with our recommendations that she's already outlined. We look forward to working with City Council to evaluate the current model of the Virginia Beach IRP and developing additional best practices as needed. We are committed to building community trust and transparency. Thank you.
Susan, thank you so much and for all the other things you have done for this community over the years. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate being here today.
Deputy Chief Gallagher, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, men and women of City Council. And let me echo many of the statements made earlier, welcoming our new city manager. And if I could just take one second to acknowledge Tom Leahy, who has championed the cause in the absence of the last city manager, so thank you for everything that you've done for us. My role here today is to provide an overview of the operations of the Internal Affairs Unit of the Virginia Beach Police Department. I believe that all the members of council have received this document. If you do not have this document, we printed one up for you today. Thank you, Mr. Moss. This is essentially the policy and procedures utilized by our Internal Affairs Unit and other members of our organization to outline the process and procedures of how our agency investigates allegations of misconduct. How do we define misconduct? In General Order 1.5, we have identified 47 rules that our employees must follow. And if any one of those 47 rules have been violated, they fall within the jurisdiction of an investigation. And those documents can be found online by any citizen who wishes to review those and see what, what is contained in there. And as you can see in the PowerPoint presentation, we have the, the link. So how can and how does a citizen complaint occur? Well, it can occur one of many ways. Any citizen who wishes to file a complaint can do so in person. They can come to the Office of Internal Affairs. They can come in person and speak to any supervisor within our department. They can call us on the phone. They can mail us a letter. They can send us an email at bbpd@vbgov.com. They can post their complaint anonymously. We make it extremely easy for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against the Department or any one of our members. We produce pamphlets, we produce information online. If a citizen has a complaint, we want to make it the least bureaucratic as we possibly can make it. So let's talk a little bit about what the timeline looks like. And in the previous presentation, that was mentioned. In the document, in our Administrative Investigative Field Guide document I spoke earlier about, we have made it our policy that the completion of an investigation into misconduct should be done in less than 45 days. And then the adjudication process should last less than 30 days. Now, when a complaint is received by our agency, we will notify the complainant that we are in receipt of their complaint. We will then notify the complainant if an extension has been approved. Now, an extension can be granted, but can only be granted at the deputy chief level of our organization, based on extenuating circumstances. And throughout these investigations, no two are exactly alike, and oftentimes, we run into time delays that can create delays. Some of those can be the complexity of the case. Some, and oftentimes, we are coordinating our efforts with our human resources and legal represent, reps, legal reps for legal review. And we also have a number of embedded processes to include our Use of Force Board that can oftentimes slow things down. So what does our Office of Internal Affairs looks like? It is led by one lieutenant and five sergeants. We also have one administrative assistant for support duties and also five FOIA administrative technicians. Our Office of Internal Affairs will, will investigate all of the following. Any complaint that centers around corruption, brutality, misuse of force, breach of civil rights, criminal misconduct, or any others directed by the Chief of Police. I mentioned earlier, we have 47 rule violations. All the others that are not specific to these particular bulleted items can be delegated out to the command and have command representation conduct the investigations. But all of these must be by policy investigated by Internal Affairs. So what is our role and responsibility? Quite candidly, it is to document thoroughly, fact-oriented, fair and objective investigations of all complaints against the Department or alleged misconduct by any member of our department, whether they're sworn or not sworn. Internal Affairs is also charged with responding to all formal FOIA requests, that's a Freedom of Information Act request, subpoena ducatum requests, and also court order documents. We also administer the Department's body worn camera program. We are the clearinghouse for all use of force reports, to include reviewing all body worn camera footage associated with any use of force report. I'll speak a little bit about that in just a second. Internal Affairs also captures and is the clearinghouse for all of our life-saving efforts, whether it involves a AED, Narcan deployment, the application of a tourniquet, or any other life-saving measure that our officers engage in. So I'm going to talk a little bit about FOIA for a second. Last year, last year in 2019, we addressed over 5,300 FOIA requests and also 179 body worn camera requests. With respect to use of force, we reviewed 1,311 use of force reports captured in 733 incidences. Now, why those two do not correlate is because every officer who is involved in a use of force incident is required to produce a separate use of force report. So there could be one incident, but two officers involved. So that's one incident and two officers that are, will have to complete two separate use of force reports. We also generate or require the completion of a use of force report for any physical act on the part of a police officer that requires anything beyond simple resistance. And Chief Zuccaro, I believe, last week described what that looked like. If a subject who is subject to an arrest simply complies and handcuffs are placed on that individual, that is not a use of force. However, if the subject refuses to comply and merely resists the action and the officer has to use minimal force to place handcuffs on, that is a use of force. And we treat that use of force like any other use of force. Also, if we point a gun or a taser at a subject, regardless if it is discharged, that is also a use of force. If we are engaged in a vehicle pursuit, that is also a use of force, which we will generate a use of force report. When we say we are a leader in this area, I mean that. Many, many other agencies do not do anything remotely close to what we do. And in fact, when we were going through the accreditation process, I had a Calea accreditor look at our use of force with respect to firearms, and they were shocked to hear that we discharged our firearm as often as we did. And we said, no, no, we didn't shoot the gun, we just pointed the gun. And they were amazed that we would go through the process of documenting even that, because many agencies will not do that. Let me talk a little bit about the Body Worn Camera Program, which is administered by the Office of Internal Affairs. So in 2019, 41.5 terabytes of video evidence was, was captured and roughly 115,000 single videos. Now, to put that in its proper context, January 2019, we were in Phase One of our Body Worn Camera Program, which meant we only had 100 cameras on the street. camera program, which meant we only had a hundred cameras on the street. In July of 2019, we implemented Phase Two. So now we have two hundred body worn cameras from July until the end of the year. We've implemented Phase Three, and by the end of this year, we will have completed our rollout and we will have Phase Four. That means four hundred cameras will now be on the street. What that would look like if we had the full implementation of our body worn camera program, instead of forty-one terabytes of data, we would be looking at north of a hundred and nine terabytes of video storage containing in slightly over three hundred thousand individual That's a huge amount of data. So in 2019, sixty-one citizen complaints were filed against either an officer or an employee. That is a citizen alleging misconduct on the part of one of our officers. In 2019, we had eighty-four internal investigations on our officers or employees. So let me try to put that in a little bit of context. In 2019, we had eighty-four times a police officer has filed a complaint against another police officer. Police officers are filing complaints against other police officers more than citizens are filing complaints against police officers. I would like to push back slightly on the notion that there is a blue wall of silence that members of my agency and profession will turn a deaf ear and a blind eye to misconduct. I can tell you from my optics, that does not happen, and these stats support that. In 2019, we conducted forty-eight inquiries. An inquiry is essentially the same exact investigation that we would engage in with respect to a citizen complaint or an internal complaint. They look exactly alike. This is a file that is consistent with what we produce for each one of our investigations. Although you can't see it, this could be an inquiry. It could be a citizen complaint. It could be an internal complaint. This happens to be a citizen complaint. We file an inquiry if we do not know that the complaint meets one of those forty-seven rule violations. If we believe there is a possibility that that exists, then we will file a, we will conduct the investigation under an inquiry. Another example of that would be if there is an allegation of wrongdoing, but it never makes its way to the police department, but rather it is filed through a lawsuit against the police department. The city attorney will notify us, and we will immediately initiate an inquiry to determine the merits of that complaint. We also filed two hundred and ninety-eight information calls. That means if somebody just calls the police department with essentially anything, we will document that regardless. If they called us and told us they don't like us driving Fords, they want us driving Chevys, well, we would note, that would not fall under a complaint, but we document all calls that come into Internal Affairs. This is a photograph that I wanted to ensure that everybody really understood the amount of work that is produced by way of the Internal Affairs Unit. If you were to stack all of those files on top of each other, they would be fourteen feet high. And that is just in calendar year 2019. That went, so when I talk about a thorough investigation, I mean it. And we capture every, just like a criminal investigation, it is critically important to house all of the investigative facts that we've determined to contain within our investigative file. That photograph right there happens to be an office-involved shooting investigation. Three investigations will occur when an officer discharges his or her firearm. One, there's a criminal investigation. Two, there is a, a separate investigation conducted by the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And three, Internal Affairs will conduct their own separate investigation. That's a file contained in the Internal Affairs records for one of our office-involved shooting cases. So what does accountability and action look like? Well, this is a slide that you have seen before. In 2019, there were just north of a quarter of a million official contacts. That represents traffic stops, arrest field interviews, and calls for service. I can tell you that we're probably close to three-quarters of a million contacts that are not documented. If you remember, I made the comment that had we had the full range of our body worn cameras, we'd have over three hundred thousand individual videos. That speaks to that number of four hundred and fifty-six thousand contacts. Our officers are required to activate their body worn camera when they are engaged in an official police action. So this is a ten-year snapshot of all citizen complaints. You can see we are trending down from 2018, and we are substantially lower than it was several years ago at sixty-one. Now, an interesting part about that, so this file right here, and I bring this as somewhat of a prop, just so you can understand what one of these actually looks like. This is a citizen complaint that contains three allegations of misconduct, but it is only one citizen complaint. So if I were to give you stats on how many were sustained, that number right there might look like a hundred. And you might say, "Well, where's the, why you have a hundred sustained complaints, but only sixty-one complaints?" Because sometimes we have more than one rule violation per complaint. That was just an example. Internal investigations, again, eighty-four internal investigations, trending down slightly from the previous year and down significantly from the previous, earlier in the ten-year trend. Very similar to what we saw in the previous slide. And inquiries, that's a trend line. There doesn't seem to be any pattern as it relates to the earlier three. That concludes my presentation with respect to the Office of Internal Affairs. I stand ready to answer any questions you have with respect to Internal Affairs.
Ms. Abbott.
And I'm sure Regina can answer anything about the IRP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm not sure who can answer these questions, but I'm sure somebody can. On, I apologize. One of my questions, while I'm trying to get myself together, is what, with, on Slide Seven, the key processing, key process points, number three, the citizens with pending criminal or civil proceedings must wait to be heard. Can you explain the reasoning behind that?
Yes, and Mark is here also, who can also provide some information. When the citizen comes to the IRP, they are providing the IRP with as much information about what happened and the investigation as much as they can. The police department is also in attendance, and they provide information to the IRP. So anything related to that case is being discussed openly in front of the IRP so that the IRP can make a determination as to whether or not the investigation is complete. So if there is still a pending proceeding involving the city, we will have provided the complainant with all of the information that they would need. So we say that the proceeding has to be over, and then if they still have concerns about something, the way that it was handled, they can come before the IRP.
On, oh, do you, you said you had a follow-up?
Yeah, because I know if they, if they're in litigation, under discovery, the government can't hold back any information that it has. It's required to share everything. That's a judicial ruling and a requirement.
And this is Mark.
What you're trying not to do is to create new evidence that did not exist at the time of the events. You don't want to, you don't want to compromise a criminal investigation by requiring witnesses who might have the opportunity to refrain from testifying under the Fifth Amendment. You don't want to require them to give statements. You don't want to create opportunities for statements that were previously given to be contradicted by subsequent statements. You want the proceeding in the court to be as pristine as possible for the benefit of both of the litigants, whether it be the prosecution, the defense, and the criminal trial, or whether it be the parties in the civil litigation. So you don't want to create an environment where you're encouraging people to provide extrajudicial statements that then may interfere with the ability to have a good criminal or civil trial.
True, but any information that would be subject to discovery could be provided, correct?
Yes. It's not that you're trying to shield information. It's if you're, if you're doing new interviews or you're taking new evidence, that evidence could interfere with the criminal or civil proceeding.
I'd talk on that later, maybe with another attorney as well, because I don't understand under discovery what would be the issue, but thank you.
A few more questions. On Slide Eight, can we get, this is just a future request, can we get a ten-year look at this?
Sure.
Something bigger than what we've got right here. And then under the, the, well, I guess the 2020, the one case that was determined that was, was not eligible, right? Determined, yeah, that was not eligible to be reviewed. What can, you don't have to give me that specific case, but can you give me an example of something that gets to that point in the process, but it ends up not being eligible?
Well, keep in mind that it is only at that point in the process where the IRP makes a determination as to whether or not it constitutes an abuse of authority. So it does not have an opportunity to have that level of scrutiny before that point in the process. So, so it seems like, but it's actually the first opportunity to even have that evaluation.
Thank you for that clarification. On Slide Nine, number three, what is the total membership of the IRP currently?
Seven.
Seven?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, might be something I need to independent. What's the general size of these committees usually? Are they, are they relative to the population of the community? Are they just a random number? Is there best practice?
A citizen review panel?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. And then on, well, it's not really related, well, it's kind of related, number four. Are the meetings public? Can anyone attend the hearing, or is it limited to just the participants in the litigation?
Yes, anyone can attend.
Okay. And then, now, go ahead.
There's one caveat to that. We will have a closed meeting if a juvenile is involved. Or if there's a sexual victim involved.
I see, I got you. And then the other question I had, what is the training that's provided to the membership in terms of their onboarding when they become members to the panel?
We actually just had an onboarding with our newest member, Cliff Rice, who actually was chair of the Human Rights Commission previously. But basically, it's an opportunity to go over the existing policy that we have, and we provide information on, you know, the rules as far as what the IRP can do, the boundaries that they work within. There is a tendency, I think, to start re-investigating the case once you start hearing the information from the complainant, and that's really not our role. So we go over that type of information with those coming on board to make sure they understand how, what the role is.
Okay. And then the only other question I had in regards to the membership, how, are there positions that have to be represented geographically within the city, or are they all, where they live within the city, does that matter?
It does not matter.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Regina. Also wanted to thank the IRP Board for being here and in attendance today. A lot of the questions I had, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Abbott has already asked. One of the concerns that I have, and I think it's important to note, is the reason why we're having this discussion on the agenda today about the, this panel and how important it is today. I mean, you know, here in our society, with all the social issues we are facing, I think the, the community is asking for another way or a way of recourse other than the current way. So I think it's important for us to understand the true function of this panel and the length of its authority, because as we see now, there's more of a need today for accountability going forward when it comes to investigating within our police department and therefore. So I think I am more than encouraged to take, to be involved in the process to improve how this board or this panel works. One thing to note is that I don't think a name change isn't necessarily going to solve the responsibility or likelihood of, or the function of this panel. I think we really have to get down to the process in which this panel operates. With that being said, just looking at one of the first steps on Page Five, citizens to submit complaint to the police department. Now, you know, me personally, I believe, you know, our country is built on checks and balances, and I don't believe submitting complaints to any organization which haven't investigated itself would be, it would be a step towards integrity or keeping that integrity of that process. And that's just off the checks and balances of that. And I'm not sure if the city attorney can clarify why, or could we change the fact that if, if there is a complaint for any department, that we don't necessarily complain or place those complaints directly to that department.
The complaint could be addressed to the city manager's office. It could be addressed anywhere that this body wanted it to be.
All right. Thank you. So I think it's important that when we look at the process, that we improve that process by, by way in that it works and so that we are giving it more, more authority, so to speak, and more integrity in that process. So to create a more, more trust, so when citizens, and more faith, so when citizens do have complaints or that they understand that the process is one of transparency, integrity, and they're not being, that the results of the process are true in that nature. The other, the other question I believe I had, I think Councilwoman Abbott asked it about having a ten-year snapshot of the complaints, but that'd be all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. Moss?
One of the things I've heard from people is, and this is also true in other agencies, is people say, "Well, we never have complaints." And the people say, "Yeah, we don't complain because nothing ever happens." And so therefore, you never have an idea of what the real latent issues we've often seen now, obviously with sexual assault, discrimination in the workplace, right? We never get any complaints, but then you go do the survey, and you finally get a bigger problem than you thought. So I don't know how, this is just a challenge for any organization. I don't care what business you're in today, whether you're repairing cars or a police department, is what's the complaint that people don't complain about because they think nothing's going to happen? So you, you walk away thinking things better than they are. So I don't know how you go about looking at that, but there is always a latent out there somewhere. So I think that's, when you look at that, and I don't know, when you look at complaints around the country, are we just so good that we're low? Or is it that the way people feel like nothing happens for the process, so they don't file complaints to start with? So I would, I would advise us to check our academic people and other sources out there. How do people go out and check that, that you're not, your temperature is not on the flame, so therefore you don't know you have a fever? And so you, just are we measuring the right thing? And that's, I'm not saying we, I don't hear lots of complaints, but I've heard that from people saying, "Yeah, why file a complaint? Nothing will happen." And so I think we have to be mindful that we are taking the extra step to say, "Do we really have the thermometer on the right place? Are we measuring the right temperature?" I don't know if we do or don't, but it would be nice to find a way to figure that out. I think would add to our outstanding police department. It's kind of hard to prove the negative. I mean, it's like buying insurance. I mean, it's like buying insurance, but it is a legitimate question in today's society. Look what we discovered about sexual assault when we started going to the people. We learned a lot of stuff we didn't know, because we weren't asking the right question the right way with the right place. So it's just a thought. I'm not making any characterizations about anybody's performance, but it's just a complaint that I've, it's a feedback I've heard out in the community.
Hey, anybody else? Ms. Wu.
I think my, I have more comments towards the body, and I just would like to submit to the body that, as has been mentioned, the landscape of our city and our nation has changed. We have civil protests all over our nation of civil unrest regarding what's happening as it relates to police brutality. And so, for that reason, I don't believe that it's wise to have a program, or I think it's more so incumbent upon us to, as the landscape has changed, to look at a way to provide what the citizens are requesting now. They don't want the police to police the police. I don't think that's something in this timeframe that we're in is very wise. And I bring that point up because, as it relates to the process, citizens submit the complaint to the police department, and then the police investigate. And one of the concerns about that is, after the police investigate and they go through the process, then the information is handed to the IRP. And that's not what the public is requesting. They're not requesting for the police to police themselves and do the research. They want it independent of the police department, so that the citizens have more of a say-so and more control over the process. That's what the landscape is dictating. So I'm requesting that, you know, as a body, we take a look and research, what is more, what aligns more with the landscape of our community and our nation at this time? Because it has changed, I don't believe the IRP is the answer to that change and that realignment in our community. The IRP, as it states, is a review agency. What the people are requesting is an investigative agency. And so I want to make sure that we listen to that outcry. I mean, we had protests last Tuesday. That protest was specifically because the people want a citizen-controlled or citizen-review panel. They want to be more involved. And we will continue to see protests and unrest all over our city until we answer that call, until we answer the feedback. Will we get, will we, I guess, solve all the problems and address all the issues? Maybe not. But we have to make a concerted effort, first to investigate, research, do our due diligence as a body to answer the cry, and then decide what is the best model to address it. And, you know, I would like to have our new city manager bring the information back to us. What's the best model that represents our community now, not from the 1990s, as it relates to 2020, where we are now? And so, the last things that I would say in this regard, determining from what I've seen, the death nail to me that really drives the nail in the coffin is the gentleman who was the chair of the IRP. His name is Butch Bracknell, and he made, or had commentary placed in the newspaper, and he basically said something that has those recommendations, that allows citizens to take the recommendations that they've given and actually see action. Because right now, those recommendations are not implemented, to my knowledge, and that's what's been said by Mr. Bracknell, who was a former chair of the IRP. So the recommendations aren't being implemented, to my understanding. And I speak to that piece in terms of recommendations, because I've sat in a proceeding, and I looked at the process. I know things, you know, changed, and I never really got the outcome of that, and that's not the issue. But the issue for me was, sitting through the process, was that there was no real, on the part of the officer to really accept the recommendations from that panel. They just listened, okay, but it was not incumbent of them to change the conduct or their actions. And that spoke volumes to me, that says that there must be a way to look into that, to change that process. But I submit that we, you know, if we make changes to the IRP, that's one thing. But my call, and my request, because of, you know, the citizens' cry, is to create something new, a model that meets our time for 2020. So I welcome that conversation and look for that research, so that we can really address the changing climate and landscape in our city.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Moss?
I don't disagree in context with my colleague, but I do think it's important always to know, what is the problem that you're solving? You know, what does the data define the problem that it is? And when you're doing the assessment research, what says this solution will solve that problem? Because in the end, that's why I'm interested in, do we have underreported data? Because this would suggest that we have low use of force, we have all these things, you know, you got, you would think, man, we've got a super-duper police department. And if you looked at just the data, that, I don't know how any objectively would draw any other conclusion. That doesn't mean it's true, but just the empirical data would suggest it's in the 99 percentile police department. So if the data, in fact, is underrepresented, and in fact, that's something we've got to know, that there is a problem we don't see, but if you're going to look for a solution, you first have to, everybody has to have a consensus on what the problem is we're trying to solve, or you won't know if the new model will get you any different result than the new one. So I do applaud the research, because I do think this is about data. This is about, and also, and part of that is people's perception, because perception is part of reality. I don't care what the data says, that people think something different, or they don't trust the process, you've got to deal with that. But I do applaud your point about having an analytical approach. Just because there are some voices, doesn't mean that's a majority voice. The loudest voices aren't always, and those rational voices isn't always the right voice. And sometimes, the people that aren't speaking and might not be captured have an excellent case of where the system doesn't work for them, that's the voice we need to hear. So I just want to make sure that as we move out to change something, that we have an agreement before we start to change it, that we have an appreciation as to what is the problem that we are trying to solve? Is it perception, or is it performance? Performance is one strategy, perception is another, maybe it's a combination of both. Because I think in the end, that's the only way we're going to get the community as a whole to say, yes, we hear voices, and we want to hear them all, but that we came to the right approach. And I'm open to change to anything, but I do like to understand the problem that we're trying to solve, and what makes us think the new select, new approach will deliver a better outcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rouse.
To what my colleague said about data, I think, you know, having an analytical approach is always important, so you get a better understanding of what you're trying to issue problems you're trying to solve. As a social scientist and sociologist, there are a lot of things that data cannot capture. And one of the things we are particularly talking about, particularly with this type of panel, is the implicit biases also, that are associated and continuously perpetuated in systems, because our data has not shown us that, oh, or they have remained hidden within the data, or the data has not captured. So there are implicit biases that contribute to perceptions of one's police force. And I think we have a sound police force. I'm proud of our men and women of our city, but that's not to be stated, we don't have room for improvement. I think there's always room for improvement going forward. But one of the things we are, or also going to have to get to the bottom of, that data and numbers won't always point to the direction of, is the voice of the people. And we have to begin to listen to them and take their concerns and their issues to the heart, because there are implicit biases that data will always overlook. But when you're in tune, and you can relate to the public and to your community, you will understand which direction you must go. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, and then Ms. Wu.
I just have a quick question. First of all, too, I want to thank the people on the panel for their hard work, because I know a lot of times when they hear a case, it's for hours and hours and hours. They may not hear that many, but when they do, they have to put in yeoman's work. Councilwoman Wu brought up that the panel's recommendations are, could be ignored or have been ignored at times. Do we have instances of when the panel has made recommendations and they were ignored?
I really can't think of any off the top. I can think of instances when the police department has sent a representative back to the IRP to let them know what they did do. So it may not have been something that they could say, I'm going to implement right away, so they couldn't give the immediate feedback, but they came to a future meeting and provided information to the IRP on exactly what they did do to address the concern, based on the recommendation that was made. So that has occurred.
Also, I think we're going to need, you know, lots of guidance from our attorneys of what we can do and what we can't do, and things like that, whatever we're looking at. But anyway, thank you so much.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, I just want to thank you. You know, I asked, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Wu, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to follow up really quick. And in terms of the recommendation piece, what Mr. Bracknell said as it relates, from his experience as a chairman, he said that as it relates to the recommendations, there is really no, I guess there's no feedback loop, I guess, a consistent feedback loop or requirement for those recommendations to be implemented or embraced. So that is, those are his words, his thoughts, and his experience with the IRP. Now, as it relates to, you know, my concerns and what I'm asking us to do as a body, I just want to make sure we understand that what we do should always be proactive. I don't disagree. I've served formerly as a chaplain with the police department, and I have nothing but high regard for our police department. However, as the future goes on, we don't know what will happen, we don't know, you know, what could occur, but it's incumbent upon us to look at what's going all around us and to be prepared. And so that's why I ask that the research be done, completed, so that we are prepared and that we are able to address an incident, if it ever occurs. Too often, we can become, as a, as human nature, reactive. I'm asking us to be proactive. And if, God forbid, it happens, we are prepared and we can address it. So thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Yes, we have our current chairman, chairwoman, here. I would like, and you don't have to do it on the spot right now, but I would like to hear from you what you think has been the work of the Board, and whether or not you have had your recommendations set aside, or what your experience has been. And your current Board could probably participate in letting us know, because I believe, what was that date, when a lot of restructuring was done? About four years ago? Since that time, I would really appreciate hearing your experience and what your thoughts are. And you don't have to do it on the spot. You can do it now, or you can do it another time, but if you're ready, that's fine, too.
Susan, if you can come forward and give us a synopsis about your impressions, and, you know, the changes made since 2012 to improve the process.
Well, I can't speak to what happened prior to 2012, because I wasn't part of the panel, but I would have to say that, you know, the information we receive is very detailed. When we participate in a hearing, the police department give, you know, their testimony first, and we hear from the complainant. We excuse those folks from the room. We discuss it as a panel very thoroughly, to truly understand, you know, was there an abuse of authority, use of, you know, force, et cetera. I would have to say that the recommendations that were shown on the slide previously, our IRP members that were able to participate in a call last week, you know, the recommendations for, you know, I would, somebody mentioned training. I think that we can do probably a better job of training new members, even though we do an orientation of how the IRP works. I think a complete understanding of how the police department works, and maybe going on a ride-along, doing a little bit more in-depth training. I think that the website for the IRP could be improved. There is basic information there, but I did, at the request of, or suggestion of our co-chair, Barbara, I looked at Fairfax County, and I thought they did an excellent job with, you know, they have a video that explains, you know, what their, you know, their version of, I think they called theirs a citizen review panel. But it was, I think, just a little bit more comprehensive. They posted, you know, cases, what the complaint was, and then what the outcome was, and what the remediation was. So I think just the communications, which we talked about in the slide. But I really can't think of an instance, unless somebody knows something in particular, where we made a recommendation for change that was ignored or not implemented. I mean, I cannot recall an instance that, you know, that our recommendations were disregarded. I mean, the police always, you know, when we referred it to city manager, I think the, maybe the missing gap or the missing communications loop is that we don't necessarily get the feedback. You know, maybe the change was made, you know, but we don't necessarily get a formal communication, so that that process could possibly be improved. And then we talked about, you know, adding more diversity to our panel, and I think Jessica's points about, you know, how are citizens selected? Because, you know, I'm not really quite sure how people are selected. I know that when there was a change in 2012, I sent a letter to Mayor Sessom at the time, and, you know, I got appointed to the committee. But I think, you know, understanding the process of how people, you know, can apply, can be interviewed, and can represent their part of the community. Does that help? Did that answer, clarify?
Helps a lot. And any other thoughts you have afterwards, or any of the other Board has afterwards, I would love to hear them.
Great. All right, thank you.
And they sound like some really good suggestions that have been made.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, I just want to thank everybody. I requested this, you know, just to bring forward what we have been doing in a very proactive way, and I concur with Ms. Wu, that we have to be proactive. And I think a couple of things we can do immediately, but once again, is, you know, to improve the feedback loop of, you know, the recommendations back to the IRP, what's been done, but also to initiate the, and enhance the police communication with the new city manager, so he's part of what's going on, and, you know, the review process has the integrity. But then, you know, and then there was one other point. But I'm just saying that, you know, there are certain things that we could do, but I think, oh, the other thing was, to actually appoint the city council liaison. And that way, you know, that's something that we can do pretty quickly in terms of creating that funnel of information that would be coming to city council, and that the council member liaison can ensure that, you know, these policies and these recommendations are going forward. So I think this was a very positive presentation, and, you know, combined with the presentation that was made on the COLIA certification, and what we've been doing proactively as the police department over the years, you know, I think, you know, once again, I think it's been mentioned that we could always find room for improvement, but I think that we will have a police department that is the envy of many, many cities in this country, and that we're ahead of the curve in many ways. Ms. Wilson?
I think Susan has some really good points, especially about what Fairfax is doing in putting the results on the website of exactly what happened, so that it's transparent, everybody sees it. And I think that was, of course, training is always a really good thing for our Boards and Commissions, so thank you for those suggestions. I think.
Great recommendations. And thank you, and, you know, the And thank, thank you and, you know, the board members that took the time, you know, to come. It just shows that, you know, yeah, it is a citizens-appointed panel and we got some great citizens appointed. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're moving on to city council discussion on the CARES Act funding. Just to get an update, there was a request made to make sure that some of the mechanisms that are in place and what's been done. Okay. Is anybody from the city prepared to speak on this one? Mr. Adams?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Afternoon, Patrick. Welcome. I can offer some context to get us started and then we'll happily turn it over to the team from finance. We, coming out of our last conversation, we took the notes that we received from this body and we compiled those into some bullets that were presented to the Development Authority this morning that might inform a final procedure that we plan to advance very shortly. The broad strokes of that, just as a quick rehash of what we had talked about a couple of weeks ago, were that we would a limit on the on the potential grants of up to $25,000 per business, a lottery style for selection, that lottery style to come by way of three-week open application period with one week to review. We would work through those in a lottery fashion. Once that docket is exhausted, if funds are available, we would go back, we would open the window once again. A much more simplified application that we're working with with other city colleagues to put together so that we could basically, something that we hope would allow interested parties in the community to go to a single spot to apply for all of these programs, but a simplified application, which is just in what we showed the authority this morning, is something as simple as the name of the business they're addressed, contact information, and then a business license number is a is a quick check for us. Following that, receipts that would want to that would need to be submitted for reimbursement, and then a drop-down list. And I had originally put four things on the drop-down list, three things that we had talked to this body about with within with a fourth box being other that would allow for 500 characters of explanation as to how this tied to the virus or to the pandemic. The request I got from the authority this morning was to have a broader list so that so that we weren't getting into that other category too much. And so I've got some research to do on that before I can go back to them with a final procedure. But but with that said, I feel like we have captured the conversation that we had here at this table a few weeks ago and we are eager to get started.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Have we dispersed funds?
Yes, well, so we are dispersing funds as I saw the first checks before I came down here this afternoon. And that is, I want to, while I'm here, speaking of EDIP party, I do want to extend thanks to both the city attorney's office and to our city auditor's team. Linden's team has been instrumental part of us getting through these applications and finding us and then the city and then the some work that was done with the city attorney's office to develop a recapture agreement that expedited the the audit. Audit proofing is not technically a word, but the audit piece of that. We completed all of that last Thursday, shared that with the authority this morning and checks are checks are going now.
No CARES Act.
Did I say, what's that?
No CARES Act.
That's right. That's EDIP party, not CARES Act money. That was your local appropriation. Sorry if I missed, but thank you.
Mr. Moss.
That's what I thought. I was going to ask that question for clarification. That's good. So I assume now that the that the Development Authority will then codify by a motion and adoption the procedure that you just articulated?
Yes, sir. We we presented a draft to a draft of that potential procedure to them and to the public this morning. We'll refine that over between now and their next meeting and put a final procedure forward that I'm happy to come back and report to this body on once adopted.
And I assume that the finance department is the final Omni Omni of the qualifying receipts because ultimately the city is the one who's liable if it's not?
Yes, sir, of course.
And that we and we have one central account and one database where all the receipts and all the dispersions will be accounted for when we have to have this audit?
Yes, sir, that's right. So as it relates to one database, absolutely, I need to get with Alice and with Linden specifically on on the nuance of that is that money's coming to the authority and I want to make sure that we're that we're handling that appropriately. But yes, sir, that is absolutely the intent.
Because I think my understanding is even though we further delegate, ultimately the city as the recipient is responsible for any findings of an audit and reimbursements. That's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we had a central account, it was transparent. But I do think you captured very well. Thank you, the sentiment of the group, and I I'm pleased with what you reported. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else at this point? Mr. Wood?
Not directly related to that. So if anybody has questions for Taylor, I had other CARES Act stuff, probably for Alice, if I could.
Alice, could you come to the podium?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, and I know a couple of us have heard about this. I want to pass some information around here and forgive me for, I just, it's just kind of photocopy. But I'd learned that the city of Norfolk had been providing hazard pay to folks related to COVID responses using the CARES Act funding. And initially, there was there was a thought that that wasn't possible, but then there was a document of questions and answers permitted that that seemed to indicate that this was a permitted use. So Norfolk is doing something with $2,000, all the way down to, I think, $200 or something like that. But I think Norfolk's also laying everybody off for five days without pay. So they get the money, but they're kind of taking it away from them. You know, but what I do is I spoke with Mr. Bradley briefly about this last night and this morning, and this is kind of what you'll see here if it makes it around everybody. It's kind of an idea of what it would cost if we were to take frontline first responders and first-level supervisors and gave them the $2,000 and then the second-tier supervisors $1,000 and then, you know, senior managers not not getting anything. It's kind of hard to justify a bonus for for that that level when the folks who are actually out there getting it. And I do this, and the reason I asked Mr. Leahy about this earlier, if we've got 16 police, 15 human services, 10 public works, 7 EMS, 2 firepeople, who are all impacted directly by this COVID stuff, and then, you know, we've made a lot of allusions to the to the civil unrest where, you know, we have public safety people who are forced to be inside of crowds that clearly are not exercising social social distancing, they're they're doing that. I know that there was a group of, I think, seven police officers from the July 4 situation that had to be quarantined because of one of the folks there was was COVID positive and they're just now getting out of out of there. I think one of them actually did get sick, but the others, I think, got out of it. So I would just suggest that this is something that that we ought to take a look at to do specifically if particularly rather if if it's if it's covered by the CARES Act, it's a way to to provide assistance to to the folks that are directly being impacted by this, who are directly risking their lives, risking their health, risking their family's lives. And and I think that's a good thing. I also called Chief Brazel this morning because I think it's it's a fair statement to say that the lion's share of COVID patients are being transported and handled by volunteers. Because if you think about the fact that the majority of ambulance ambulances are staffed by by volunteers, they are picking up COVID patients, they are taking them to the hospital. I think I think the number I heard from from the chief today when he talked to me was that I want to say he said from like from March till last week, it was 130 total, but last week was two dozen, which kind of goes with that whole spike that we're talking about in terms of that. So I talked to him, I said, look, we need to be able to do something to to recognize those folks as well. I mean, obviously, we don't pay them, and so he's he's got some ideas on that. I just wanted to make sure that that we didn't lose sight of that. So I passed this around for for discussion and for thought about that because I just, you know, like I said, Norfolk's doing it, I believe, Portsmouth or Chesapeake, I know another Hampton Roads city's doing it, but I don't want to say the wrong one. And and I think if we have the ability to do it, if it if we can be reimbursed for it, I think it's something we ought to do to take care of the people who are taking care of the sick people in our community.
Mr. Bradley, could we explore that possibility?
Yes, sir. We'll be glad to look at it.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Moss.
I always find it difficult, as soon as you set a circumstances, where do you draw the line? I'm sure the city manager understands the grab coming from. But I did notice at the bottom of the sheet, we, there was a thing about human services because we just heard today about people out there dealing with the homeless in their PPE gear. So I would only ask, as we look at this, that we make sure that that the criteria should not be where you wear the uniform or your EMS, it ought to be the criteria is your exposure directly serving the public ought to be the basis for whatever it is. And we make sure that that it doesn't create a morale issue or for the city manager to manage and that we created it by accident trying to do the right thing. I know he'll get the gist of what we're trying to accomplish. I'd just like to make sure that that anyone who's, whatever this exposure is, and I'd rather have the city manager has to live with the consequences, tell us what he thinks the criteria is and then how to afford it than to have us manage it from here. But I'm in support of the principle that Mr. Wood, I just want to make sure it's one we can live with.
Great. Okay.
If I could make a comment on it? So when.
Okay. Excuse me, Rosemary. My apologies.
And I'm I'm glad that the human services was included because you're right, John. They they're having to deal with a lot. So a lot of companies have been giving hazard pay, too, for the people who are on the front lines and having to be out there to provide the services that have got to be done. I do believe that, didn't we reserve another $10 million in case we need it for something else?
I'm sorry.
We we reserve $10 million?
Yes, and that's kind of what I was going to.
There's money there in case of other things. So the funding is there if we want to proceed, correct?
Right. And so what I asked Howard to put up on the board is our appropriation. And so what we did is we appropriated 29 million. We recommended to city council to appropriate 29 of the $39 million. We did this back in June, end of May. And so there has been more and more interpretation and guidance on what is eligible for CARES funding. When we did the salaries, when we estimated 2.3 and 800,000, we were looking at overtime, hazardous pay, and we do have some positions that do get hazardous pay. And so that's where we made the estimates of the salaries. What we have found out is there's a lot more eligible regular salaries that are eligible for CARES reimbursement. And so a lot of cities, what they're doing is they're taking those salaries for police officers, public safety, human services, those type of positions that work directly with COVID-19, their regular salaries, even if it's budgeted, are eligible for CARES funding. And so some of that is used as part of the appropriation. And so what Virginia Beach, what we had proposed was just the overtime and the hazard pay because at the time, we weren't 100% sure if that was eligible. The other thing that we did is we reserved $10 million in case other things happened, in case something else happened that we needed to look at the funding. And so what we proposed to city council is use 14.5 for economic support and then have a contingency of a million, 3 million for economic support, and then the the rest for other compliance. What we're finding is some of the medical expenses, the actual result, 70,000 to to September 30th, that's up a little bit. I think it's 80,000 now. The public health expenses, those are kind of running where we are. The salaries, we could really allocate a lot more regular salaries to CARE funding. And then compliance with public health measures, we'll spend all of that. And so the economic support and the contingency is kind of where you have the more flexibility.
Yep. Mr. Wood.
So it's a process question for, I guess, Mr. Stiles or Alice, I'm not sure. The if we wanted to pursue this, would it require a resolution or is it just simple direction to the manager? What will we need to do?
I might go to answer this, Mark, this is a straight email with Dana.
So the $10,000, for example, Mr. Wood, that's in a contingency. The way the ordinance or resolution was written is you'd have to take action to transfer that to do it.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Moss.
Well, first of all, I applaud us that we didn't take things that we budgeted for and tax people for and then not use the money for the people who need it. So I applaud the staff for, you know, I think we should continue to pay from our budgeted resources so we have more folks to help people in the community that have already paid their taxes. But I would hope in the future, since we had a big discussion about this last week, so when people out in the community see economic support, they know that means nonprofit business and residents. So I just would ask that we update that so people like to see their name in print.
I appreciate that. We use the old, old, we use the old one. And so, yes, I appreciate that.
To that people know, where am I? Because they're always looking, where's my name?
That is definitely.
And I just want to make sure when they look at that slide, they, nonprofits, and I know that Mr. Bush made a big point of that last week, and he's right. I just want to make sure they know that there's a there's a home for them up on that slide.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, thank you for the update.
If I can make one other comment, too.
Oh, sure, please.
Some other some other cities now, there are more CARES funding. And so we are working on a letter for the mayor and the council to request additional allocations from the state for CARES funding. And so we'll we'll be sending that to council next week.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Through the city manager, obviously. Thank you.
That was good feedback from previous council recommendations. Okay, any any other city council comments at this point? Mr. Moss?
Two. I want to follow up on the discussion about the concrete balls in the river, the Lynnhaven and the oyster thing, because I saw we got this memo about Lynnhaven Basin ecosystem restoration. And I just want to make sure, I didn't know if this was related to that, I should have looked it up and did my homework, but I'll admit I didn't. But if it is related to that, and it sounds like it might be, that I think we walked away from here last week that we didn't want to proceed till someone came back here and got us some more information. So I'm just trying to make sure that we haven't lost track, that we're we're not going to be putting out 28,000 concrete balls in the ocean before in the Lynnhaven River before we have a better understanding. That was one item, and I have one more.
Can I say something about that?
Please, yes.
Before you go on? I talked to, is Ken Chandler here? Okay, so I talked to Ken Chandler about this yesterday. He said it's an email. And one of the things that I really want us to do is to make sure we talk to the community, the people, like Mr. Garag that came forward. We really want to sit down with them before we do anything. We said, let's not do something that we can't take back until we make sure that's really what we want to do.
Right.
So Ken assured me in this email, follow-up email, that we would be doing that, so.
Super. I just saw that letter and I just want to make sure we haven't lost track or it was one and the same. It may be a memo about about a different topic and I correlated incorrectly.
Well, okay, so this is the Lynnhaven Restoration Project. It's been in the CIP for more than a decade. It's been the subject of a number of public hearings. The city, and I think was approximately two years ago, entered into an agreement with the Corps of Engineers. It's actually a Corps of Engineers project. We provided the right-of-way, we acquired oyster leases and provided the right-of-way, but it is actually the Corps' project. That project is underway, not the placement of these concrete artificial reefs, but it is a one of three parts of a contract that the Corps is underway with now. The Corps and the city will be providing you a briefing on August 4 about the project and the status of it and where it is.
Okay, well, good. I just want to make sure that we weren't getting ahead of over our skis there. The other item that came up, I asked questions about, was the marina. Because I talked about the parking. But as we go into the next budget process, this also applies to people, just like for parking for the restaurant people. But we need to make sure that the depreciation on the marina, the operating costs and all those things, we should be, I'm not sure that we're recovering our full cost in the charges for the marina. We need to make sure that on a total life cycle costing basis, we're not asking the larger public down the road to be subsidized in the recapitalization. Based on what my little calculations, we might just barely be covering the depreciation, but I don't think we're we're really making that so when it comes up time, next time to be recapitalized, there's a sinking fund that the people who use it paid for it versus coming back to us and now we're paying out of the public funds, general fund, to pay for it. So if you look at those questions, look at those numbers, we're providing a service somewhat below market price. And we need.
That probably is the case.
Well, that won't be popular with the boat owners, but but it's still, it's hard to ask the general public to subsidize a marina. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other council comments? Okay, how about gender review, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, under ordinances and resolutions, we've got three items. Is everybody okay with these three items being on consent? We do have a speaker on every item, but is everybody okay with that? Under planning, we have two speakers on every item, but I believe we can do the same thing as we've done before, Mr. Stiles?
Not with you.
Well, your policy before said if there was one speaker.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, there's only one speaker for six, seven, eight, and nine.
So one through five, there's two speakers?
Correct, at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so in one through five, we're going to hear item six, right shape. Item six, Reiche Lynn A. Reed, Joaquin V. Castro, family daycare home at 1674 Dillon Drive, Kimsville. You just want me to have to say that again, don't you?
Yeah.
Item seven, Lorna C. Donatone, QPRT, Scott and Catherine Moran for a conditional use permit, Ray Community Boat Dock, Lynn Haven District. I'm okay with that. Linda M. Addison for a conditional use permit, Ray Home-Based Wildlife Rehab at 1717 Dancers Court in the Centerville District. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Yes. Item nine is request for indefinite deferral. City for JB ordinance to amend section 201 of the city zoning ordinance, Ray setbacks for in-ground pools adjacent Atlantic Ocean. Is anybody okay with indefinite deferral on that? All right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this point, let's recess.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.